We're now at.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Let's let our attendance creep up here. Thanks for coming to our special meeting, everybody. All right, it looks like we're leveled off right now at about 24. Do we have? Do we have Jeffrey calling in? Jeffrey Allen, Commissioner Allen?
Check. If he could raise his hand using star nine.
Yeah, Jeffrey, please press star nine and we'll promote you to a participant.
There he is. He's a panelist.
What's that?
Commissioner Allen just rejoined as a panelist.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay, could we just bring my agenda up? Could we come to order?
Come to order, please, everybody.
And if you could join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic. Jeffrey, I think we're getting an echo through your phone. Okay, could we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. This is a special meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board with a scheduled 5:30 PM start. Here to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by city and state authorities, the city of Jersey City canceled all in person public meetings until further notice. As a result, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, editor of the Jersey City Reporter, city with the city clerk on April 6, 2021. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public via the Jersey City portal.
All right, thanks, Matt. Could we have a roll call, please?
Sure, I'm seeing eight commissioners. It's Chair Dr. Gonzalez here. Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Horton.
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Twenty-eight members.
Thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please, Bridgette?
Just raise your right hands or hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give in this proceeding tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And I see Mr. Ward, Ms. Marion, Ms. Sigmund, Ms. Clark Sokolov. And I thought I saw Cameron, but he's not here. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt, do we have any correspondence?
We do have correspondence, so I'm gonna hand it over to Lindsay, who was in receipt of that.
Oh, the the letter of support?
Yeah, or we can do, and we call the item. Either way, it's up to you, Chairman.
We should probably just put that in the in the record for that case.
Okay.
All right. So, all right, we don't have any old business, correct? We don't have any adjournments tonight?
None.
Okay, everybody going forward. That's good to hear. All right, let's get into new business. We have a discussion of the planning board reorganization. Formal action may be taken.
So, yeah, if the if the board wasn't aware or any of the commissioners haven't heard yet, so the planning staff lost one of our planners, Erica Baptiste, who is also the planning board secretary. So we need a reorganization, and currently Cameron Black is the deputy secretary, and I've been the import secretary in the past.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a nomination for Cameron Black as our new secretary.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, could we have a roll call for Cameron as secretary, Matt?
Sure. Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Desai.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to make a nomination for Matt Ward for deputy secretary.
Second.
Okay, do we have any other nominations for deputy? Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
It's Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Desai.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Hi, congratulations.
Congrats.
All right. Motion carries all in favor. I'm back in.
Yeah. All right, let's move on. We'll call the review and discussion of the adoption of Central Ave 2901 redevelopment plan. This was initiated by city staff. Formal action may be taken, and we have Commissioner Cruz recusing on this application.
I recuse myself.
Thank you, David.
All right, so you do have a couple of slides to go through.
Sure.
Okay, can you all see my screen?
We can, yes.
Okay, and you can hear me, okay?
Sound great.
All right. All right, so this should look and sound familiar to most of you because we presented this plan back in August, where this board recommended the plan to city council for approval. A few things have changed since then, since the last approval, so that's what I'll be going through tonight. In addition to the version of the plan that's been available on the data portal for review, we do have a few floor amendments we'd like to make, which I'll go over. And I do have a revised plan highlighting those changes to mark for the record when when we get there. So the redevelopment site, just to refresh everyone's memory, is located in block 2901 on Central Avenue in the Heights. It's almost a whole block, as you can see here. The area is 24 parcels and 2.65 acres of property, which is largely owned by the city. And the majority of the site is currently developed as a public parking lot. And there are a few lots owned by the city that the city owns and currently leases. So the planned area is currently zoned neighborhood commercial with a portion is R1, one and two family housing on the corner of Griffith and Cambridge. So some additional background about how we got here. The study of the area to determine if it was an area in need of redevelopment was completed in 2018, and it was determined as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. To draft the language of the plan, we did have three in-person meetings back in the summer of 2019. And then we circulated a draft plan that fall in November of 2019. And COVID did delay things pretty significantly, but we did have another virtual meeting July of 2020, and then the plan was heard and approved by this board in 2020. As I go through the slides, anything that has changed from August to today is highlighted in red. This is the previously approved zone map. The boundaries will be the same tonight. We just added an overlay to clarify some language, and I will show that in just a moment. This is just highlighting Zone 1, that is comprised entirely of city-owned parcels. Zone 2 along Central Avenue reflects current zoning, which is neighborhood commercial, and then Zone 3, which is low-rise residential. I mentioned there was a map change, so there was a provision in the plan that you originally approved that states for split-zone development sites, the larger zone will take effect. Meaning if a future owner of Zone 1 acquires property in Zones 2 or 3, Zone 1 would be the standard to use for future development. And this next slide is showing the updated map. I'm sorry that the colors changed, but again, the boundaries are the same. You can just see those hatch lines over Zone 2 and 3, a few of those parcels, that would be a part of the overlay. Really just to highlight that any future development of those sites would have to be consolidated into Zone 1 through that process. So again, anything highlighted in red is what's changed from August. Not going to go into too much detail, but you know, the purpose of of Zone 1 is to to continue the commercial uses along Central Avenue with residential and other uses above. We wanted, and the community wanted to retain that character while allowing for additional bulk so that the required public parking could be feasible. So there's a max of seven stories with a 10-foot, minimum 10-foot setback above the fifth floor along Central Avenue. Previously, we required 400 public parking spaces, and this version currently is for 300 public parking spaces. Our floor amendment changes this further, which I'll get into in just a moment. There's currently a curb cut on Central Avenue, which will no longer be permitted in order to enhance pedestrian safety and traffic flow. In addition to the 300 public parking spaces, there is a residential parking requirement of .2 spaces per bedroom. We did remove the office and retail parking. We felt that the, through the public and residential parking, it's more than sufficient. Structured parking is required to be set back 60 feet from Central Avenue, just so a parking structure isn't the predominant feature along Central Avenue. Another change is the use of mechanical parking is permitted, again, just to maximize the space. Another bigger change, there's now an affordable housing requirement, so 20% onsite is required. The ISO, the inclusionary zoning ordinance, is the guiding language there and is cited in the plan. So it states that the ISO is triggered for any development in Zone 1. Again, that's that larger portion of the lot. The open space requirements are the same, but one of our things that we're changing on the record is to clean up that language a bit. Okay, I mentioned before, we did add a Zone 1 overlay. This applies to a few of the lots that are not owned by the city, but could be acquired and consolidated into Zone 1. We wanted to clean up the language, make a visual on the map, and again, make it clear that the incorporation of any lots in Zone 2 or 3 is only accomplished through that consolidation and to preserve some buildings on Griffith. Zone 2, we just changed it to neighborhood commercial zoning, just to preserve the five-story building line on Central Avenue to simplify things. Lastly, Zone 3 includes a few homes ranging from 1 to 3 family on Griffith and Cambridge. Currently zoned R1, but we wanted to bring those three family homes into conformity, so we revised the language to say that all uses and lots at the time of adoption are permitted. Again, this is the map. Zones are the same, but you could see the hatched areas are the Zone 1 overlay. And this last slide here, I just wanted to summarize this version that's before you tonight and our recommended changes that we want to put on the record. So the main changes since August are the affordability requirement, the 20% set aside, change from 400 to 300 public spaces, change from Zone 2 to just neighborhood commercial language, the inclusion of a Zone 1 overlay to simplify, and a language requiring coordination with historic preservation for a few of the lots that are not in the overlay. And then the request, the changes for tonight are changing back from 300 public parking spaces to 400 public parking spaces as a requirement under community benefits in Zone 1. And this was a result of conversations with the Central Ave Special Improvement District and the councilman. Same with open space, we wanted to clarify that the 10,000 square feet of open space would be located on the ground level, publicly accessible on Central Avenue. And we also would like to add language that the space, the public plaza, would be dedicated to the late Councilman Yun, who was very active, obviously, in the Central Ave community. So I'm gonna share my screen for a moment, just to show, I'm already sharing my screen, obviously. So this is the version we'd like to mark for the record, I guess. Would that be A1?
Do you want to make this B1 for this item, since it's a board item?
Yeah, mark it as B1.
Great, thank you. So the proposed amendments, so these are changes that differ from the version that's on the data portal, so they're highlighted. So it's really just under the community benefit requirements under Zone 1, a minimum of 400 public parking spaces. And then the clarification for the open space requirement shall be located on Central Avenue on the ground level. And then the open space shall be dedicated to the memory of the late Councilman Michael Yun. So I will also mention that the Central Ave Special Improvement District submitted a letter of support to the planning board. So just to go over that, aligns with everything I outlined, so they support keeping the public parking spaces within the project at 400, the open space clarification, allowing mechanical parking, the inclusionary zoning, preserving older buildings on Central and Griffith, the inclusion of electric vehicle charging stations. So there was also a comment that they had to, that they request to be added to the revisions, that the public parking shall be provided at a rate that is set by the city. The same policy for metered zone parking and commercial parking. So the language currently reads that a minimum of 400 public parking spaces shall be provided at a rate that is comparable with city rates for zone parking, commercial parking. I can go into that a bit more now, but if I'm sure they're on the call as well, I don't know if you want to say that for public comment, but so that's the letter. And I'm gonna stop sharing my screen just so I could see everyone, but that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Okay, thanks, Lindsay. Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. First of all, how did the, you know, not even considering the floor amendment at this point, how did the parking go from 400 down to 300?
So we did do a financial analysis, and I mean, it's, this project is certainly feasible based on the results of that, but it didn't really change things too much going from 300 to 400, and at this point, we really wanted to present a plan that reflects the community-driven vision for this block that's been going on for several years, and the Central Ave Commercial District as a whole. And that was something that was really important to the community, to keep the 400 spaces, so that's that's tense the change.
Okay, and while we are on parking, the .2 per bedroom requirement, that's for the residential structures. Are they? Is there any way they're ever going to be included in the parking structure, or are they on their own site?
They would be in the parking structure. I don't know how they would be, just because of the the configuration of the site and that the curb cut can only be on Cambridge or Griffith. I don't know where else they would, they would really be based on potential build out of the site.
Okay, so at that point, would they have to purchase those spots from the city?
So this would be.
They were privately owned?
This would be a privately managed and maintained parking structure. So as part of the plan, they have to submit, whoever the future developer is, they would have to submit a parking management plan. So how spaces would be marked and laid out would be a part of their proposal, which would have to be approved by this board in the future.
Okay. And my last question is, the four Zone 2 lots that front onto Griffith Street. So it looked like you only had two of those that were hash marked. So two of those would be available if they're acquired by someone in the Zone 1 section. They would be brought into Zone 1. The other two would stay in Zone 2?
Correct.
Okay, so that entire zone on Griffith couldn't be purchased and brought into Zone 1?
There are two lots that are a part of Zone 3 that could be. Here, I'll just pull it up. So, sorry, it got a little blurry when I exported it, but there are these two lots in Zone 3. I don't know if you could see my cursor, but those those could be acquired. We wanted to preserve these. These are the three family homes. I think it makes sense just for a transition in height, because you could see the entire block isn't a part of the redevelopment area. And if you can go up to seven stories, we just wanted to allow for a bit of a transition in height. And this lot here on the corner of Central and Griffith would, after consulting with historic preservation specialists, it would not be approved for demolition due to historic integrity, so that's why that one is left out.
Okay, understood. So we're talking about one lot, I apologize, one lot that fronts on Central for Zone 2 and two lots that front on Griffith for Zone 3.
That could be acquired?
Yes, that could be acquired and brought into Zone 1.
Yes, and then these.
Yes, the other ones on Central that are Zone 2. Okay. Yeah, that's it for me. No questions, no more questions. Anybody else? Any questions?
Yes, I have a question about the 20% affordable housing on this lot. It will be offered to people living in D-World or anybody in Jersey City.
That would be anyone that lives in Jersey City in that building.
And Lindsay, just to add on to that, what's the level of affordability?
That's set by ISO, is it 50 to 80?
So that would be controlled by Uniform Housing Affordability Control, it's a state law. Also, we're gonna call it UHAC a lot, and you're gonna maybe get familiar with that acronym. That sets for an affordability levels for that state legislation. So I think we're, we're still getting up speed on that. It's a mix of low and moderate. There's even a percentage of the low that's even aside once further for very low.
Okay.
Income, right?
Okay, but nothing spelled out in this plan that's controlled.
No, we're really just gonna point to that, we're gonna point to that UHAC as a best practice in Chapter 188, which is the chapter of municipal ordinance that controls the administration of affordable housing in Jersey City.
Okay.
That hasn't been finalized yet, right?
The UHAC, what do you mean? In what sense?
So it's still in committee, as I understood, but has it been finalized now?
Yes, 187 and 188 have been updated to UHAC standards. And and the inclusionary zoning is passed, yeah.
On the city level?
Yeah.
Correct.
But is there a pending legislation for the UHAC at the state level?
I believe there is, and one of them, one of the changes is including that very low income set aside.
That has not been.
Not, no, I'm, be honest, this, this, be honest, this is more of Gigi Gazan's wheelhouse than ours. We are trying to get speed on it. I believe that hasn't been formally adopted. But that's one reason that we're using this legislation, is that as the state, it's their policies and best practices, our our policy stays current, and any portable housing that's built for this, that's conforming with UHAC, can count. Did the city ever in the future be a fair share?
Okay, all good, Santa?
Yeah, I just thought that it was still pending. I was afraid maybe I missed it, and if I did, I'd like to know.
Okay, gotcha. All right, anybody else? Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question on, thinking back on Chairman Lassiter's remark on the I wrote down here, the 2.02 pocket spaces for one bedroom. There's gonna be a management company for the parking facility or for that. Then what would be a type of enforcement if somebody didn't want to purchase a space or feels and owns a car? Where would be their alternative? They'll be parking in the street, because we're looking at 10 bedrooms for one pocket space, basically, right? Or five, five? Is there any, if there's a company that's gonna take over the parking facility, but the person that's living in the units don't want to deal with that company, what is their alternative, the street parking for them? Do they have an option?
I don't know if we have an answer to that right now, Commissioner Torres. Typically,
if there's a zone parking, get a parking permit, they need to go, need to pull the city ordinance that's already on the books regarding. Need to prove that there's no more space in the garage prior to them getting a permit on street parking. I think that they would be bound by that city ordinance.
So I would have to, if I wanted to live on this property, I would have to be able to affordable or not affordable, be able to purchase a space, too, if I own a vehicle.
That's correct. That's how the city ordinance right now is, is for anyone that lives in a multifamily building with garage parking.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Ed. Anybody else? Any questions?
Yeah, kind of a follow-up sort of to what Ed's comment was, or question was. I know it says that the parking approval will be provided at rates comparable to city zone parking and commercial parking. Who monitors that? So let's say the management company decides to raise the rate. Who's gonna do the comparison and make sure it's always within that comparable rate of city and zone parking?
I believe that would be a part of an RDA redevelopment agreement, would be worked out there. It'd be a part of their parking management plan, I believe, as well.
Okay, so that would be actively monitored, then?
Okay, and
just a quick follow-up as well. All right, one second, I was trying to find where I saw it. For these affordable housing, I know it says that alternatives to the onsite affordable housing can be permitted by the approval authority. I'm guessing that would come before us, so if they wanted to build less than that or have offsite affordable housing, that would go through us again?
As defined in Chapter 188, the approving authority is made up of the Director of HEDC, Community Development, and someone else. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but.
Chapter 187, but we're still working through. So, yeah, it's the approving authority is what's created through that after adoption of the ISO, the inclusionary zoning ordinance. And their decisions live outside of planning board, so if there's any reduction, it actually does not need to come before. Does not need to necessarily come before planning board. It depends on how that approval is drafted, when it comes before any board or zoning board. We still haven't really seen them come through yet, so we're so, we don't really know. Or it could be an instance where does not, their decision, the approving authorities, to reduce 20% down to any other level, 19.5, could or could not come back to the planning board.
Just as a, as a point of fact, I guess, 187 does say that the Affordable Housing Agreement, which would be the decision of the approving authority to determine whether or not it would be 20% or not, or the buyout, is supposed to be submitted in, as a part of the planning board application, which is not coincidentally going to come up. um application, which is not coincidentally going to come up a little bit later when we're looking over the application. Um so the the intent is definitely that the approving authority gets their um say or look at it before it comes before uh the planning or zoning board. But Matt's right, we are still trying to hammer out, I think, a flow that uh is practical and makes sense. Um but also, you know, meets one eighty-seven.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be beneficial to, at the very least, the public to, you know, weigh in on these things. Um I want to make sure that everything's open and honest and that you know, if it is a different committee, let's call it, uh that would decide any reduction or movement of those units, I think, you know. It obviously, I don't have any say, but my recommendation would be that it happened before site plan review. So the public could weigh in on it.
He is absolutely correct. That's how it's drafted. Um I also just, it it may not uh it might necessitate a return to any board or zoning board uh in the instance where someone says they'll do twenty percent. Then, you know, are asking for extensions and can't get financing and and make an application to the proving authority. We don't know what that will happen, but I'm sure that that will be, could occur as well, so.
What I think makes at least this redevelopment plan unique is that it would, this will go to the city council and then the JCR will write an RFP for it. So it it it'll probably be much more um specific, kind of very similar to what we're seeing like with Bayfront rather than um uh what we're seeing in other places, if that makes sense. So it'll be drafted and there'll be probably a redevelopers agreement and then it'll come to this board.
Okay, understood.
Just a little different, yeah.
That's more clear. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Peter. Uh anybody else? Anything? Okay, Lindsay, are you okay if we open up for uh public comment now?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, uh this time, let's open it up for public comment. If you'd, I see number of hands raised already. Good job, guys. Uh if we have anybody that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you'd like to raise your hand, if you'd like to comment, uh please press star nine.
Promoting Kern Weisman.
Hello.
Kern, raise your right hand to be Warren, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure, it's Kern, K E R N, last name Weisman, W E I S S A N.
Thank you.
Kern, good evening. Um this isn't your first time here. You know our drill. We have five minutes for you.
Yep, yeah, I should I should take that one. Yep, um thank, thank you, thank you, Chairman. And uh I I I what I what I wanted to uh just ask and just confirm the the number of spaces, I think was four hundred. I- is that right? The number of parking spaces in in the plan? Is that correct?
Yes, well, that's what we're proposing to
Okay.
change it back to.
Yeah, so so uh can I ask, has the planning board reviewed? Or I don't know if it's appropriate, but have they reviewed the um the commissioners? Have they reviewed the financial analysis that was done? Because uh the reason I'm asking that is the financial analysis would seem to point to uh for me, at least as I read it, that it's not really feasible. Um so the heights has been very clear about not one, the heights community has said, you know, we don't want a high rise here in exchange for parking spaces. Um but the financial analysis tells me that that the four hundred spaces is not feasible to be built in a um seven-story envelope. Uh we even had, I heard in one of the previous meetings, uh developer uh came on and said that, you know, he pretty much confirmed that. It says, you know, I I'd need to go to twelve stories or fifteen stories, you know, to be able to give you four hundred spaces. So I I I think that that, you know, what's being passed here, while it's a good plan, I think it's a pretty good plan. Uh I don't think it's feasible to be built with uh four hundred spaces. Uh I'm not even sure that's needed for uh the Central Avenue District. I understand they may, the Central Ave uh SID may want that. Uh but that's not maybe not feasible. And I can tell you that if a developer comes back and says, hey, we want to build a twelve-story building, there there is no way that the heights community is going to uh accept that. Zero, zero, zero way that's gonna happen. So I'm just gonna tell you that I think what you're passing here, while it's a good plan, I think that it's not feasible. And I think it's unwise to pass a plan that can't be built. Um so, you know, within the constraints of what the community is going to accept. Um so I just want to say that.
Okay, thanks, Kern. Yeah, um I I did have those concerns at the last go around that um, you know, this wasn't feasible. And I I agree, it's twelve stories, you know, as long as I'm the on this board, that's that's not gonna work for me. Uh I would, you know, before we granted any height increase like that, I think we would look at a parking reduction. So, yeah, that that, you know, obviously, that's not in front of us tonight, but that's what I would be leaning towards in that instance, so. Um, yeah, Lindsay, um do we have the the financial analysis on three hundred versus four hundred? What is the difference?
Um so, just if we wanted to get into that, but like I said, we, with the financial analysis, not to be, you know, detract from the point, isn't necessarily the focus of what's before the board tonight. Like at this point, if the plan is approved, like Tanya alluded to before, it will go out to RFP. And then we would see what the responses are from any interested parties. And their response to the RFP would include a pro forma or the financials of the project, and then we would take it from there. Why we're here tonight isn't necessarily to focus on that part. It's what's before the board again is the community-driven vision.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the financials of any project generally aren't something the board gets into. Um but, you know, we're putting it in the plan. It should uh it should be feasible. So I'll just leave that there. Um, all right, Kern, thanks for your comment. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just wanted to, just just one follow up uh point on that was, you know, there is, there is guidance in terms of state law about about not about a a board such as a planning board not passing things that they know are not, you know, feasible to be developed. So it's so, so there there is some, you know, there is some consideration. I know it's not necessary financially, but you do have to consider whether or not you're passing something that can actually be done uh and implemented. If it can't be, then it's, there makes no sense to do it. So I'll leave it there. Thank you for your time, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? If you'd like to comment, once again, please raise your hand. And again, if you're calling in and you'd like to comment, please press star nine.
Promoting uh KESID MC to panelists.
There we go. Hello, everybody.
Yes. Could you raise your right hand? I don't see it there. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you could state and spell your full name.
Alexa Lima, A L E X A L I M A.
Thank you.
Ms. Lima, good evening. Uh we have five minutes for you.
Okay. Excuse me, Alexa, shut off. Sorry.
No, no pun intended, right?
Oh, my goodness. Alexa, shut off. Wow, not gonna say your name anymore tonight. Oh, my God.
Just give us one second until Bridget gets back.
Okay, let me unplug then. Sorry.
That's all right, but
I really want her. It's crickets. Sorry, Ms. Lima, go ahead.
It's okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Uh thank you, Lindsay, for presenting uh the letter for support for the Central Avenue SID. Uh we appreciate it. I would like to add on behalf of our four hundred and fifty members um to rec- that we recommend the following to be incorporated into the plan. The public parking policy in the parking deck to be set to the city policy ordinance. In order for it to incentivize new parking facility, a dynamic parking parking strategy will be required as part of the larger parking management plan. By allowing the parking deck to be more affordable for residents, local employees, and shoppers, the city will be able to encourage off-street parking. Parking policy in the parking deck will need to be coordinated with the city parking management plan. Therefore, should be decided using the same process as other municipal lots. The KESID would welcome the following language to be added to the plan. Minimum of four hundred parking spaces shall be provided at the rate set by the city policy for metered zone parking and commercial parking. Sid trustees overwhelmingly applaud, um you know, all the efforts. So thank you so much. That's really what we really want to emphasize.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think uh it is, you know, obviously, the Sid's seen the um the floor amendments for this, correct?
Yes.
That Lindsay wanted to add tonight. Okay, and they're they're satisfied with that?
Yes, four hundred parking spaces and on the ground level, yes.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you for your comment. We appreciate it. All right, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hand.
Voting Jimmy Kendi.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comment you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state and spell your full name, please.
Jimmy Kendi, J I M M Y, last name, G U I N D I.
Thank you.
Mr. Kendi, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Good evening. So I'm very glad to see that the four hundred parking spaces are gonna be put back on the um on the redevelopment plan. My only concern was the mechanical parking. The mechanical parking statement that it stays, that it states inside the the redevelopment plan. So I'm not sure if the community understands what the mechanical parking means, but it's basically one of those tall um things where the cars get stacked on top of each other. So as a community member, I think we would prefer um to have, you know, drive-in parking spaces as opposed to a mechanical parking, even if that four hundred number might be reduced slightly. That's why that's really one of my points. Um another thing is, there was another person who made a comment stating that the four hundred parking spots are not feasible and that no developer is gonna want to take home this project. Um and I just want this comment and to say to that person that um when we put it out to bid, I guess we'll see if any developer goes after it or not. But this is a community project and I guess, you know, I guess we'll 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 see when it goes out to bid. Um if there's any interest, because based on the the um I'm looking at the the numbers that David Diaz shared with me. Um it does look like it is a feasible project. So those are really my comments. Just the four hundred parking spaces, we would like to see them as not being uh mechanical.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kendi.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Uh if you'd like to comment, you could please raise your hand. Once again, if you're calling in and you'd like to comment, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Back then. Okay, motion is made to close public and seconded. Public is closed. Uh Lindsay, just a quick question, the the mechanical parking question. Um I know we can get significantly more spaces in a mechanical parking situation. Uh do we have numbers on how many?
No, so I, just to respond to that, I mean, I think you've seen plenty of projects that where mechanical parking is incorporated, especially with larger projects. Um having requiring a max of seven stories, four hundred public parking spaces plus a residential requirement. The mechanical option is important to make this layout of the project feasible. Um again, the full parking management plan would have to be approved by the board. So the ratio of mechanical versus non-mechanical would be a part of that management plan, which would be a specific thing that they would have to submit as part of uh their future proposal.
Okay, so we could, you know, see flexibility in that in a later date during a hearing.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Uh all right, and obviously, Lindsay, you've uh made your case tonight, made your presentation. Um so I'll entertain a motion then. And whether or not that motion uh would include the floor amendments.
Sure, Chair, I'd like to make a motion to um accept and approve with floor amendments uh the review and discussion of the adoption of Central Avenue twenty-nine oh one redevelopment plan and forward to city council with a favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Okay, we have a motion made and second for approval with floor amendments.
Okay, Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Okay, with, sorry, one, two, three, four, five. With seven, four, and one of censure, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh could we get David Cruz back? And David Cruz is right in there. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item eleven is the review and discussion of amendments to the LDO regarding applications, checklists, uh notice, waste management, review procedures, and hearing requirements. Uh this was also initiated by city staff. Formal action may be taken.
All right. So let me get everything situated on my window here. Okay. So you should be looking at a document that's titled, goes amendments to the land development ordinance.
Um and we say it.
Okay, and it has a yellow highlight um between the three twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one date there, that's a struck struck and uh four twelve, we found that there should be a floor amendment, which we highlighted in yellow. Uh let me get um into uh what this is and why we're doing it. Uh and why we think this is the, this has probably been a long time coming um since we've been in in this uh virtual meeting world. Um and because of the IZO uh and some other um recent uh changes to the LDO regarding um shadow studies, ethic impact analyses, uh the G I G A R, the green area ratio regard. Uh so um our checklist uh are long overdue for an update. Um we need more flexibility for digital submission. Um we've updated standards like I was just mentioning. And uh what we put here is an update to after three, four, five, thirty point A, three, four, five dash thirty-one, and three, four, five, thirty, thirty-one point one. Um those are to be restricken completely and rewritten as follows. Uh and we get down into this language here. Um this is pretty much all the same as there was in that three twenty-three version. Um but I'll just go through this. So we've reiterated um we we have one simple change to chapter three, four, five, thirty, historic preservation review procedures uh section, and it really pertains to A and one of that section. So this regarding the certificate of openness and the certificate of no effect, this is just streamlined um language. And there's actually a memo uh on the data portal too that shows the existing languages, uh language for these chapters that's being struck. Um and uh references just to the application for review. So they've gone the way that city planning has gone, where um the application can be updated by updated by by staff as necessary, and then a digital version is put onto the city's official website. There's no other changes to that section of of the LDO. Something here. Um and then we have three, four, five dash thirty-one applications and checklists. Uh so a lot of this still is organized in the same fashion, but uh Uh, so a lot of this still is organized in the same fashion, but uh, what we've done is. We had all of these different checklists for different approvals. And it just caused confusion for applicants. Big and small. And what we've done is we've streamlined it into one checklist where there's different sections that. Be applicable or not applicable, or they can be requested waived. Um, and we think that this this reorganized checklist for general development. Checklist, this is referring to planning board and zoning board applications. Much more streamlined. And then there's also up it's to historic preservation. Uh, checklist as well. So we just have these opening paragraphs. Uh, we were keeping, this is actually some of this language is kept, but uh, it's just easier for us to strike it all and re-adopt.
Re-adopt, re-adopt, adopt.
And uh.
And staying.
Getting a. I'm getting a. I'm getting a repeat there. One second. Um, so here at the top, we included this uh, note applicants in column marked submitted. Ash know, you will find certain items marked X. Uh, which are the items determined to be deficient. As per the requirements of the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance, if you request a waiver, you must apply detailed reasons for the request. This is language that stock language. It's on our checklist now. Applicants are familiar with those knows and that no column. But we're just reiterating that this is a reorganized general development checklist. So we have. Sections here in this kind of gray. Uh, so we have a forms and affidavits. And we lay out, you know, general development application. A lot of this looks exactly the same. Some of this has been added. A number six, we realized that we didn't have the certificates of tax and water bills paid, and you notice we also added payroll. So that's a new tax to the city, and we wanted to make sure that there's a certificate for that. We've already coordinated with uh, the Sessors Office Tax Collection Office. Make sure that there is a certificate for that. We've. Now are accepting a lot more digital payments. So. Uh, there's new uh, just new checklist rounded up checklist items to uh, make sure that we have for those payments and receipts of those payments. Um, the demolition ordinance was updated a couple of years ago. Uh, so there is now more often a demolition memo that needs to be considered a checklist item. Uh, so the was. Was uh, situations where they haven't gotten the demo determination yet, fall through the cracks in in our review or. Or in the testimony before board. There is now an unaffordable housing checklist form that. Out by the Division of Affordable Housing. We've consolidated the general development application. We're looking to publish that after this is adopted. Where a lot of the utility questions and infrastructure questions that were on that application form. Are are simplified and puts this to another form that's later on so that someone could quickly submit an application without much information on hand right away. And if that's be that's needed later, they they fill out that that form as one of their checklist items. Consolidated all the notice information into the section two, notice and proof of service. But you'll see that there's digital, digital notice packet is required now because we're we. See us distributing digitally and putting everything on the data from from here on out or some form of um. Of a data portal if we if change to another upward provider. Have a review coordination section, which is like the review agent section. Where we we speak to uh, reports that might be from other. Uh, from other part areas of the city, divisions of the city. So an application all with historic preservation if they. If they're in a historic district, so we want to capture that. Uh, the survey has been um, blocked out a little bit easier as we have sign and seal, lock and lock numbers, meets and bounds. Existing and proposed easements. Going existing and neighboring structures and windows with setbacks dimensions. Geography, which is a common, a common comment we get from engineering and sometimes it goes through the cracks. And it's it's actually very helpful on areas where there's a slope. We have. And civil plant requirements, and this is kind of the bulk of the checklist items in our in our preliminary final majors checklist item. But we asked. Through our review of even minors, we asked for a lot of these things that are not on the on the minor site plan checklist. And instead of just asking for them to do more, and then they. The applicant saying, well, that's not on the checklist. We decided that it's better to just have a flushed out list of what we expect. Even of minor applications. So a lot of this is is already in our existing checklist. Um, and we just bought it all here into one place. Additional site plan, additional plan requirements. These are of engineering requirements that um, that our engineering division look for. Uh, very much the same. So. In this new thought of one checklist item, if they don't have a subdivision, they just. They just mark an A when they submitted or waiver requested. And we'll respond with an N A and say you're not requiring of subdivision. You don't need to do any of this. And similarly, uh, we have a new section on I Z O section, the eight. So if there there's no I Z O triggered by their application, again, this would be not applicable. If it is, then there we have these items that we want to capture. And this goes back to the thing we were just talking about before. So. If they are triggering I Z O, if it's determined that they are, or if they know that they are, um, when they submit the application. And they are looking for relief from chapter eighty-seven. In other words, they don't want to provide twenty percent onsite affordable housing. Then they have to do two and three of this section eight. So proof of payment to the fiscal analysis uh, for payment. The type of their proof of payment or. I gotta fix that for payment for the fiscal analysis study fee, the approving authority. So they have to send us a receipt that they have paid the five, it's a five thousand dollar fee for for chapter one eighty-seven. It goes to the proving authority and that it gets up towards uh, making a fiscal analysis with. A um, with the city's uh. School analysis consultant. Produce that fiscal, that study for their request. Uh, and then uh, after that process comes through and and bringing authorities and receipt of it as well as the applicant. They get a determination from the approving authority. Uh, you know, yay or nay or or adjusting it or or hearing what their their other alternative may be, whether it's payment in lieu. For chapter one eighty-seven or off-site affordable housing for chapter one eighty-seven. Or a community benefit in the form of an amendment. Um, so that's uh, the general development application or checklist. That's what we're calling it. That's how we've proposed it. We think it's much clearer, much shorter. One, it's one checklist. So um, attorneys doing minors and majors will get familiar with this checklist. We think it's a much better way to go. Uh, and then we have a historic preservation commission application checklist, which is set up generally the same. They just have these titles for those those sections. And brought in a lot and flushed out a lot of what they asked for, which isn't in their checklist now, and it's much improved. Uh, according to Maggie O'Neil, who assisted with bank staff in using this and putting it forward before you. Let me just scroll through. Make sure I'm not missing anything at the bottom. Uh, these different sections, say the sad white sidewalk work, for work, window work signage. Hmm, neat. Are referencing this utility infrastructure and refuse form. It was currently. Outdated language referring to an old uh. Sanitation, third-party group. So it's really out of date. We kept the digital submit, uh, digital subdivision language. And our hearing requirements, we rounded that out also with physical and digital sets of plans and. Period boards and and we made sure that it's in a form. We thought this was an important language. Uh, that it's in a form presentable for commissioner and audience benefit. So once we get back in person, we're in in our new space over. For Jackson Square, uh, much, much better. Much better visibility as far as screens and presentations. So we're we're hoping that. Don't get any more comments like I, we can't see your boards. From from the person in the back of the room. So those are the changes. I don't know if I necessarily need to go over the memo. We we think it's much improved and uh, hope you do as well.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Uh, anybody, any questions? I know this isn't uh. Sexiest application of the night, but uh, this is a big uh. Big difference for planning staff, I know. Okay, anybody, any questions?
I do have one question from Matt, and I.
Sure, go ahead.
Throwing him the bus, not throwing him the bus, but kind of putting him on the spot. So the one uh, change certificates of tax payroll and water bill is paid. I'm curious, it's kind of an outside the box question. But if a developer or property has fines associated with it, say. Fines for litter or empty lots or things like that that are, they haven't paid yet. Is that a requirement that they have to pay those normally? Or is there any exploration that, you know, you guys do before that? Does it not even matter?
No, we haven't done that. Um, you you say you're talking about like if there's an outstanding like code enforcement?
Yeah, so say there's an empty lot that has litter trash. They've been cited by, um, you know, code several times for it. They have outstanding this rule. Fine a bill or you have to address with them. Is there any that planning normally does or should do, or does it not matter?
In my experience, that has not been um, part of a review. Uh, when uh, doing a review, if there's, if we do site work and we see conditions like that. We will mention it to the applicant. In a lot of cases, it does not assist uh. Assist the applicant who come before board when the when the sites in disrepair. And there's been comments made by commissioners in the past as I went by the site, it looks terrible. Um, you know, shame on you. Um, but I don't, as far as uh, us following up. Enforcement and finding out that there's outstanding bills or or fines, uh, that's something that we haven't in the past. Uh, I'm not sure, Tanya, do you do you know if that's practice?
I I I don't know if that's legal. Um, I know that the taxes are something that was uh, that is legal, but I don't know how the fines are legal as far as site plan application goes.
Yeah, so the certificate of taxes is. Actually found in the M L U L that that can be a checklist item. There's, there's some question as to if the taxes aren't paid. Can the board hear the application or not? That's something that's. Uh, out there, but. Predominantly, the position is the board does not have to hear if the taxes aren't paid. The question about violations is not something that that I've seen uh, required. Anywhere. So I don't know how that would hold up as a checklist item for completeness purposes.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily proposing. I was just curious to see if that's a thing that planning considers or has considered, or if it's an issue we should consider more or less.
As I stated, I think we do it in our review, but um, as far as the M L U L being silent, we haven't incorporated.
All right, thanks, Matt. Thank you, Peter. Good question. Um. Anybody else? Any questions? Anybody else? Any questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you, guys. Uh, so at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application. You can please raise your hands. If you are calling in and you'd like to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hand. Once again, anybody from public, please press, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, move to close the public.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded public is closed. And. Matt, obviously, we have your recommendation, correct?
Yeah, we I we recommend approval. Um, allow us the opportunity to just do one more sweep for any sort of small grammatical changes. But uh, yes, we recommend it with the floor amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve with floor amendments. The review and discussion of amendments to land development ordinance regarding applications. Checklist, notice, waste management, review procedures and requirements. And forward to city council with a favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Yeah, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval with floor amendments.
A motion approved with floor amendments, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Uh, Matt, I just want to say thank you to you and the staff. For putting this together and streamlining the process. Great job.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Design. And Herman Langston.
Aye.
Watching carries all favor.
Okay, thank you, Matt. All right, let's move on to the review and discussion of amendments to the Jersey Avenue Light Rail redevelopment plan. Regarding overlay bonuses, affordable housing and school development bonuses. And I'm sorry, and general update to standards and regulations. Uh, this was petitioned by Lincoln Equities, the Jersey City Housing Authority, and also city staff. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, hello commissioners.
Hi.
Quick introduction before we get into my presentation here. So. I think we've had a couple of conversations in the past few years about this plan area with various proposals coming through. And ultimately, that led to an understanding that we needed to revisit this area, particularly within context to affordable housing. Um, so staff has been working over the past few months um, to rewrite the plan under that understanding and to also um. Do that while incorporating some proposals that have been put forth by private development, um, including Lincoln Equities, one of the petitioners listed. Um, so we've been working to revisit the plan and um, we've really tried to engage the community throughout the process. So we started this rewrite, I would say, November uh, of twenty twenty, and we are now here bringing this before you. So I'm gonna um, share a presentation to take you through the process and the scope of the updates. Um, we do have, we have had the proposed language on the data portal. For your review, so we can go into any specific questions after that, but I believe the presentation will cover. Most of the content of those changes. So we'll we'll rely on that as our main. Main way to review today. I'm gonna share my screen real quick. And can you all just confirm if you can see that?
We can, Valerie.
Okay, great. Um, so like I said, we started this in the end of twenty twenty, and this was really an effort. By Matt, myself and Liz Opera, Urban Designer. Um, looking to incorporate affordable housing standards uh, within the. Plan to incorporate some larger um, private development proposals and to also just generally update the plan as it needed a lot of. Kind of administrative overhaul. Um, and so we really have worked to um, pull the document, I think, into a much more modern and um. Applicable form than what it's been operating at so far. Okay, so. Um, so I just want to start off by making you familiar with um, where the plan is at today in its current form and what some of the regulations are at and what the state of the built environment is. And then we'll go into our community outreach process and the scope of the changes. Um, so for goals and objectives, you can see uh, in the map, there's a yellow outline denoting the plan area. Uh, so we're really talking about the area bordering Hoboken and the Hoboken Terminal Rail. As well as Fourteenth Street, so the Holland Tunnel outbound lanes. Um, so the objectives of the plan as it's approved today are to encourage elimination of vacated, deteriorated and obsolete structures. To improve traffic flow throughout the area. To encourage the adaptive reuse of existing structures. And to promote balanced development in accordance with the Fair Housing Act, as well as to develop a network of public open space throughout the plan area. Um, just a quick understanding of where we're at geographically. This is roughly a fifty-acre plan area containing eighty-nine parcels. The current population estimates for the tracks in this area, the census tracks are about two thousand two hundred forty-five. Um, which is a seventy-three percent increase um. In recent years, and so that's. in recent years. And so that's really attributed mostly to the development just outside of the actual plan boundary at Soho Lofts and City Lofts and some of the other larger adaptive reuse projects that have happened recently. The area is bound by major transit networks, including the Hudson Bergen Light Rail and the New Jersey Transit Lines to the north. And then, but as I said previously, the Holland Tunnel outbound lanes to the south. The Lacawanna Building serves as a major employment center for the area in addition to several big box stores across Maron Boulevard. So I'm sure most of us are familiar with the grocery store. Best Buy, Target Shopping Center across Maron. And the neighborhood is currently served by a school facility south of 12th Street. So that means that children in this area would be going to school closer to Hamilton Park, and that will become a topic of discussion a little bit later. And then just getting into more current conditions of, of the plan in terms of language today. The plan's divided into three districts, which is the high-rise district seen here in green, the neighborhood district seen in blue, and the commercial strip district seen in purple. The Lacawanna Building, I'm sure many of you are familiar with, is a kind of a very recognizable longstanding structure, and it is eligible to be landmarks. The Holland Gardens Campus, which I'm sure you are also familiar with, is operated by the Jersey City Housing Authority and contains 192 low to moderate income units. The plan today has overlay zoning for St. Lucy's Adaptive Reuse. This board did approve that. Approval, I believe that was 2019, so it was pretty recently. And the construction of the homeless shelter that was part of that overlay zoning is underway right now. And then the plan has a three-year interim use period and an existing open space bonus, which allows an additional 30 units per acre of density to a development for contribution of $5,500 per unit. And just primary thresholds, so you can understand what the built, the built form is permitted to do today. The high-rise district is mixed use in nature. The max permitted height in that district is 110 feet, so roughly 10 stories. Industrial uses in that district can have a max height of 60 feet, and the permitted density in this height today is 90 units per acre. The neighborhood district steps down slightly. It is still primarily residential and mixed use in nature with a max height of 75 feet. So roughly seven stories. Office and restaurant uses can also have 70 feet, and the permitted density here is 50 units per acre. And then the commercial strip, as it exists today, is auto, commercial, light industrial, restaurant and hotel uses with a maximum height of 50 feet, though height maximums vary by use. So like I said, we really looked to have a very robust and transparent and community engagement process as we worked through these amendments. We wanted to keep the community up to date and, and really get their feedback on a lot of things. So we thought it was important to kind of review that process with you all here today. So we held a series of three meetings, the first being in late January, followed by one in mid-February and one in mid-March. And each of these meetings had different, different content. So it wasn't just a repeat session, it was to kind of progress the conversation and show them how we were incorporating things we talked about, or how we had further studied different recommendations. Each meeting was followed by a seven-day public comment period where we encouraged them to email any comments to us, and we would follow up with calls as needed. So we did have several follow-up conversations with various groups and stakeholders and residents of the area. We also ran a Q and A function during all the Zoom meetings, so people could submit questions live in the Zoom meeting, and we could either answer them live. Or the ones we didn't get to, we actually downloaded the Q and As, answered them in writing, and all those answers were then posted to the data portal. So everyone was able to get, get a concrete answer to the questions they posed. And then we also had live polling during the meeting, so that's a function that's available on Zoom now that we were really experimenting with through this process, and we found very helpful. And then a little bit of how those meetings went. In meeting one, we had 116 attendees login. 61 people participated in our polling questions, and we had 34 questions on Q and A. Meeting two, 67 attendees, 47 of whom participated in polling, and 45 questions submitted in Q and A. And then our final meeting, 47 attendees and 20 questions submitted. And as I said, those answers are still, questions and answers are still available on the data portal today. And then a little bit, the tables on the right and, and in the next two slides will show you kind of how we gathered feedback through the polling. And this did inform our process as we, as we went through the amendments. So quick things that we surveyed people at the beginning was how they heard about the meetings. This is just useful for us to understand our best channels of promotion and future community participation efforts. And why are you interested in this conversation? And most people responded that they live in this neighborhood immediately, or they live in an adjacent neighborhood. So it was good to have people who really would feel the impacts of the plan changes participate in the conversation. Some of the questions that we asked throughout the meeting, so I believe these two were asked in our first meeting, which were, what are your greatest concerns as this neighborhood grows? And the vast majority of people identified their top concern as overall affordability of the area. And a lot of people identified traffic as a major concern. And then similarly, we asked what community benefits would you be interested in us writing into the plan? Top priorities identified were the light rail, we're adding in a light rail station and adding in more affordable housing. So this is great that the, the responses for both of these questions spoke to each other, and they weren't completely divorced. And they were also in line with the changes that we're proposing here tonight. So that was very reassuring to see. And then in the next meeting, we got a little bit more specific, and we have really had many members of the public raise the concerns of schools in this neighborhood, schools access. As, as a major challenge, and people really struggle with their children having to traverse over, you know, the Holland Tunnel inbound and outbound lanes to get to school in the morning. At a very young age, even for elementary school. And so there's been a, a a big push for incorporating a new school in this plan, and you know, we had a very transparent conversation of how that's happened previously in the city under, under development proposals. So when that comes through the mechanism of private development, that that usually means some sort of density bonus and increased height in order for that to pencil out financially in the school to actually be able to be turned over to the city. So we asked if, we took the public through the examples of Laurel Saddlewood, which this board heard and approved recently. Also the Annex School at 25 Columbus, which is under construction right now. And most people responded that, yes, they would support a bulk bonus in order, if that's the appropriate mechanism, to get a new school built in this neighborhood. And interestingly, most of those people who responded actually don't have children. So we thought it was nice that, you know, everyone in the community could recognize the need, even if they weren't personally affected by it. And then another question we looked at, we had a lot of conversations about the 16th Street Park. So this is a corner park. Really at the core of the project area, and it currently is 100% impervious coverage. There are multiple basketball courts, but they're in pretty bad state right now. They are utilized, but they really need a facelift, and we also wanted to understanding, understand what kind of other programming the neighborhood would like to see in this area. So we had a lot of conversations, and most people responded that they would really like to see a redesign of this park come with 50 to 50 passive to active programming. So a balance of things like courts and fields to just, you know, an opportunity to sit and read a book, to picnic, or to do something a little bit more leisurely. And then similarly, we asked about specific programming elements, and a lot of people responded that they would really like the redesign of the park to incorporate natural landscaping. As I said, it's 100% impervious coverage today, so it's entirely asphalt. They would like passive and leisure areas and event space. So these were things that we took into consideration, not just in the plan in terms of 16th Street Park, but writing in our landscape standards for the plan overall. Okay, and then meeting the city's vision, so kind of just a fact check as we go through all this. We always want to make sure that as we're going through a larger amendment such as this, that we're looking back and making sure we're still aligning with other city ordinances. So the first step for that is always to double-check the master plan and make sure that what we're proposing is still in line with the master plan. So this is just a pullout of the land use map in the map, in the land use element of the master plan. It does call for multifamily high-rise, multifamily mid-rise and multi, and highway commercial land uses in this area, and all three of those are being continued with the proposal before you tonight. I would say that one major consideration is that there was an amendment to the land use element in 2015 that kind of updated the goals and objectives of the land use element, and we fact-checked against that as well. And we feel that we're hitting a lot of the, the major objectives of that amendment in this update. So these are just a few highlighted. I won't read through them for brevity, but just to, we just wanted to ensure you that we have made sure that we're really continuing the, the blueprint vision that's set forth in the master plan in this amendment. And then similarly, the IZO. So the inclusionary zoning ordinance will apply to this rezoning effort. We have written it very specifically for this plan area. I think we kind of just had a conversation on the central app as to the specifics of a lot of that, but for reference, this really, the inclusionary zoning, the level of affordability and the unit mix is set by UHAC. That will be continued to this plan. There will be a requirement of 20% of units when the IZO is triggered, and that's set by a minimum of 5% should be built out on-site. And any reduction from 20, in between 20% and 5, must be handled through the approving authority. And so now we're gonna get into really the, the content of what we're proposing here tonight. So we've written in a series of bonuses to the plan and, and kind of massaged some of existing bonuses. And we're just gonna cover just a quick summary of where those are at. So bonus A, we have base zoning bonus, which is the existing open space contribution that we've just kind of brought up to date. Zone is bonus B is an affordable housing bonus. Bonus C, school development bonus. Bonus D, light rail station overlay bonus. Bonus E is already existing and already utilizing the plan, so we did not make any changes there. That's the St. Lucie's overlay. And bonus F, the Holland Gardens overlay, which is the replacement of the existing low-income housing. We also added a lot coverage bonus, and we have added a new neighborhood district overlay. So bonus A, open space contribution. I explained earlier that people, the developers could see an increase of 30 units per acre permitted density for a contribution to an open space fund at $5,500 per unit. That number is grossly outdated for the market in Jersey City, and so what we've decided to do is actually bring this number up to the applicable fee rate that the IZO uses. So when you pay out a unit in the IZO, IZO, if you're required 20%, you're reducing that down on-site, you're paying out at $75,000 per unit in this part of the city. Tier four. So we are actually aligning the open space contribution to meet that number, and basically, we just want to make sure when we're valuing a unit, we're valuing it consistently, no matter where that money is going. Bonus B is the affordable housing bonus. So this is really the element that brings the plan into conformance with IZO. And what this does is we've left all the base zoning that exists in the plan today the same. So the, at base value, we're not changing anything. Everything that's permitted today is still permitted. We're just adding in the affordable housing option as a bonus. So when a developer tries to utilize this bonus, they have to meet all the requirements of the IZO, including the 20% affordable. In exchange for meeting the IZO, the density is now gonna be regulated by building envelope or bulk and not by unit, not by units per acre. And we have set new, new maximums. So the existing maximums in the plan for the high-rise zone, for example, are 110 feet, which we said was roughly 10 stories. If you utilize the IZO and you have a larger lot. So again, we've kind of added a little level of nuance to this. So we set the new maximums by lot size to make sure that we're not permitting a disproportionate height in, on a smaller lot. So a smaller lot, 4,000 to 15,000 square feet gets now a permitted height of 12 stories and 140 feet of height. Lots, 15,000 square feet and up, get 14 stories and 160 feet of height. So for reference, that brings the maximum from 110 feet to 160 feet. Bulk regulations, the coverage was, so any development on these lots that utilize this bonus will be permitted 90% lot coverage on the base of the building, which is a bottom six stories, and permitted 70% coverage of the lot on any tower elements, so anything above six stories. There's no side yard requirement, but there is a 30-foot rear yard requirement. And there are facade separation standards written into the plan to break up the bulk and to promote light and air through the design of the massing. Frontage requirements, 10% of the ground, gross ground floor is required to be commercial. So this is really gonna promote more of a functional insular neighborhood. I think that this is something we have seen as growing the important in the era of COVID, is being able to have access to all your basic needs within your immediate neighborhood. So we hope that by increasing the retail requirement at the ground floor will get closer to, you know, people really having access to all their needs within a five-minute walk. And parking, under this bonus, the parking minimum is lifted, so there's no minimum requirement. And the maximum is 0.5 spaces per bedroom, which is the same maximum we're permitting in the base zoning. And this is really to enable the building to be built out for residential uses, which in turn will maximize how many units that 20% affordable comes out to. So the objective of how we've written the standards is really to maximize the number of affordable units that are generated under this bonus. Bonus C is the school development. So I gave you a little introduction that this was just a kind of unanimously expressed need from the neighborhood, from the council person, from adjacent neighborhoods. So we have a bit of a unique constraint in this area. If you see this pink circle on the map, that's actually a radius, it's a 1,000-foot radius that's represented through what is called Terrell James's law. So this is a state law that says that no school can be located within 1,000 feet of an honor off-ramp to a highway. And so this area is largely affected by that. Now, you can apply for a waiver from that standard, so there, there is, you know, an option that site comes up in the future and falls within that boundary, and they have to go to the state and obtain a waiver. So that's kind of how we ended up with the boundary we have today. And this orange area denoted on the map is actually properties that are eligible to utilize this bonus. And this is really after we've done some kind of high-level studies to, to see on what sites that this, this school build out would actually be feasible. So we've identified it within the high-rise district, the following sites. Any parcels within that orange boundary could propose to utilize this development. And again, this is a bulk bonus, which would allow for four stories of additional bulk on these, on these levels. For smaller lots, this brings you to a maximum of 16 stories or 180 feet. Larger lots, it's a maximum of 18 stories and 200 feet. So the school has to be a minimum of 23,000 square feet, which would function more as an annex similar to what we see at 25 Columbus. And it can only be utilized for the build out of two school facilities for a maximum of 60,000 square feet, so it's not a bonus to be used in perpetuity. Eligible properties, as I said, may be required to get a waiver from the Terrell James law. The next bonus we're proposing, and this is the bonus that was really petitioned by Lincoln Equities. This is their site, and we've been working with them to nuance the massing. And also have been working with the city's financial analysis team to understand what's really feasible. So this is a more specific proposal, and this is really to manifest the build out of a new light rail station at Jersey Avenue. So the new light rail would happen, you can kind of see the proposal here on the bottom slide. But it would happen just off of Jersey Ave, and it requires pedestrian access from both Jersey Ave and Grove Street. So some of the standards that we've written in here, the top map just shows kind of the setback requirement. So basically, anything in the orange is really your buildable area of the site. So we require setbacks from all property lines, and we require a minimum 15-foot sidewalk over on Grove Street, 25-foot setback from Jersey Ave to promote access up to the station platform. And a 12-foot minimum walkway for light rail access along that entire northern boundary of the site. There's also a requirement for a central public plaza that will allow people to hopefully in the future come through from 18th Street and access the light rail platform, and that's a minimum of 18,000 square feet. Under this bonus, so basically, the intent of the bonus is that the developer would build out and Under this bonus, um so basically the intent of the bonus is that the developer would build out and deliver a light rail station, a new platform. And in exchange, um the site would be permitted max height of eighteen stories and two hundred and thirty feet. Uh. But that's not just a crude extrusion, so meaning that's not permitted on the entirety of that orange footprint. Uh. There's a lot of towers, setback requirements that start to nuance that form into what you see in the the graphic on the bottom here. So this is um really a more true massing of of what we might see under a proposal. Um. So keep in mind that this this board is not tonight being asked to approve a specific proposal. They're just being asked to approve to approve these general uh parameters of what a proposal could come in under in the future. So the actual site plan would come before the sport in the future, should this all move forward and become zoning. Um. So the the light green area shows the the boundary of the base of the building. So this would really primarily be parking structure component in the building and the white portions would then be towers. And so we've worked to set um maximum square footages for what towers are allowed to be uh gross square feet wise at different height ranges. So basically, the taller you get, the smaller square footage you get on your tower so that um things start to shrink and and the lightener starts to open up the the higher you go. We've also set a series of setbacks from neighboring properties to the towers themselves. One to note is this forty foot setback from the light rail. So it's a forty foot setback from any rail right away, and that is actually applicable through all of the plans. So there are other properties that aren't specifically in this bonus zone. Um. But they still have to meet a forty foot setback from the rail right of way. And um we also basically have set offsets of of how close towers are allowed to get to each other. So we're looking at the relationship of this proposal and this parcel uh to other parcels in the area, but also insular within different tower elements of the proposal on how they relate to each other. Um. And we've set a minimum ninety foot setback across that plaza to really ensure that we can open that plaza up. A ninety foot uh wide plaza is very generous. It's much larger than actually most streets in the city. So that will really allow that plaza to be um a functional, light, airy, open space for the community. Um. I think that generally hits all the major parameters of how we really approached this bonus. One of the other things is we do have some longer stretches of facade. And so we've written in requirements for facade relief, meaning that they have to start to vary the plane of the facade. It step parts up and and break it up so that you don't just have one long massive tower um that there starts to be a lot more articulation in the design. Um. Again, this bonus would allow for density by envelope. Uh. We did some crude analyses and that would allow approximately at full full build out if the bonus were utilized, the bulk were utilized at its full um capacity at about eight hundred units on this site. And um in kind of continuance of how we've talked about the I Z O, this site would still come with a ten percent affordable housing. So this would be um a a very applicable example of something, a project that would need to go before the approving authority. They would need to basically show pencil out that the investment that is made through the build out of the light rail um is equal to about the investment of the ten percent um of affordable housing that they would build out, should the light rail not be built. So basically, it's it's to understand that the city is getting that value and that um we're still making sure that we're cementing in a level of affordability on this property as that's the number one objective for the amendments before you tonight. Okay, bonus F. I'm gonna take a little sip of water here for a second. Uh. Bonus F is written as an overlay zone specifically to the Holland Gardens property. Uh. So this property is looking to be redeveloped by the Jersey City Housing Authority. And uh the they really have a lot of controls on how the property gets redeveloped. Those are set forth by federal standards as a proper, a public housing property. Uh. So there's not a lot of policy written into this portion of the plan. We're really just looking to write in the parameters for the bulk that will be permitted in that redevelopment. But at base value, um we do want the board to know the redevelopment does require a replacement of at minimum one hundred ninety two low income um low to moderate income housing units, which is what exists there today. So what exists onsite today at ba- base value will be replaced and it might be expanded upon, but the zoning that we're proposing does allow this to be a mixed use, a mixed income, sorry, development. So there will be market rate units involved in the proposal as well. Um. So this requires a sixty foot right away connecting Fifteenth Street. So that's a a major note of how we're writing in the zoning is we're actually going to pull and continue Fifteenth Street in through the campus, which does not exist today. So Fifteenth Street uh ends rather abruptly at Erie and picks up again past Jersey. So we will continue that street and that will actually um help us achieve some alleviation to some parking struggles that this neighborhood has been expressing a lot. So they've really been seeing a lot of competition um for on-street parking and and adding an another block of right away with two sides of on-street parking will help that demand. Um. So on the north parcel, basically what that does is it it um really buy for kids the the site into two parcels, the northern and southern. Northern parcel is required to be a minimum of seventy thousand square feet. And similar to the light rail overlay, it has um a series of maximums and minimums set within the property as to how tall uh everything's allowed to be. So on Erie Street, that's a maximum of eighteen stories and two hundred feet. On Jersey Ave, it's a maximum of twenty-three stories and two hundred fifty feet. So that's going to be um a redevelopment matching more similarly to the scale across the street of at Soho Lofts. And a tower span is allowed to be a maximum of forty percent of the block frontage. Um. The south parcel is a little bit smaller. It's a maximum of eight stories, ninety percent building coverage permitted. Um. Building setback, which will ensure a twelve foot sidewalk along this block. And we are actually requiring a landscape buffer um between that parcel and the properties uh that are fronting the commercial strip district on Fourteenth Street. So a lot of those are gas stations. I think there's two gas stations in here. There's a series of actually some small R one scale housing um and a multifamily building. And we really just wanted to provide a buffer between the new development and and also a buffer from a lot of the traffic and the noise and the pollution that happens on Fourteenth Street. Um. So yeah, I think I covered most of the uh the bulk parameters. One thing to note is that we're um permitting a base or podium of up to six stories and sixty feet. And we do have actually parking minimums written in. I believe those are on the next slide. Um. So yeah, so we have a minimum one-to-one replacement on the public housing units. And that cannot equal less than twenty percent of units. So if the the hundred ninety-two actually comes out to eighteen or seventeen percent of what their overall development is, that affordability, the number of affordable affordable units will increase to meet the twenty percent of the I Z O. Um. And this allows the the property to adjust income restricted unit mix based by total bedrooms. So they're replacing um total bedroom in the areas because they did express that they have some existing units that aren't um utilized fully. So they might have a family in a four-bedroom unit that only needs a three-bedroom unit. And you know, they would like to take that extra bedroom and actually make an additional uh one-bedroom affordable unit. Um. So the this also allows in the zoning that we've written for for sale affordable housing. So that would be condominium, affordable condominium housing, which is a pretty new concept of the city. There have been a couple properties that have done it, but it's not heavily utilized. So we'd be really excited to see affordable ownership options come to the neighborhood. Um. And as I said, we do have parking minimum requirements on this site. So under affordable housing bonus, we lifted a parking minimum. There was no longer a parking minimum requirement, but there will be a minimum requirement on this property specifically of point, um sorry, this did not get updated, but actually the language that you have before you tonight is point three spaces per bedroom. Um. And that actually, we met with a tenant group of the Holland Gardens property multiple times and and discussed parking struggles and car ownership. And we actually um did a study and they polled their residents about car ownership. And we do believe that we'd be able to meet the demand that they have today, the existing tenants have today. Very attainably, it'd be very easy to meet that with a point three ratio.
Just a correction, uh Mallory, that was one of the last commissioners. That was one of the last things we were studying um and asked to by the tenant associate said it's point two five for for better.
Sorry, point two five. And basically, in that conversation, um they expressed they had, they believe they have a need today of about ninety-five spaces and that point two five would generate, I believe, ninety-two spaces. So they were um happy to see that, you know, their needs would be met. Whereas today, they don't have um very much onsite parking at all. They have just a handful of spaces and and the rest they utilize on street parking. Um. And then we have a maximum of one space per five hundred square feet of all other uses outside of residential. And that parking can all be accommodated under the plan on the north parcel. So the south parcel doesn't have to provide separate parking. It can be consolidated into one deck. Okay, um. This is a new bonus that we're introducing. Uh. It's a lot coverage bonus and the existing plan actually has something in the spirit of this that's uh specific to street trees. Not even street trees, sorry, just um trees being planted on private property. And we just didn't think that it was uh something that would be heavily utilized. We haven't seen it be utilized yet in development that has occurred in this area. And so we wanted to take the interest and the intent of that bonus and um you know, materialize it as something we think that developers would actually look to utilize and build out in uh in effort to really expand um green infrastructure. So this is something we heard repeated by the residents of this area was that they just lack green infrastructure. They lack green elements in general, that there's flooding issues. Um. And that really they need to see more performative landscape, meaning landscape that does a little bit work um in terms of helping with stormwater runoff and filtration. And so we took a look at um our base zoning and what that base zoning allows for seventy-five percent impervious lot coverage. Um. Which means twenty-five percent of your lot is allowed, is required, sorry, to be permeable material. And we looked at what happens when we consider the way development really plays out today in Jersey City, which is often that, you know, we see many proposals with things such as green roofs or stormwater detention tanks built underground into garages. And if if developers, if we really incentivize developers to bring um this kind of green infrastructure to their proposals, um how can we maximize that to actually kind of increase the coverage we get overall throughout the plan area? And so the way we've written this bonus is that um in the the developers can basically get an exchange of increased coverage for green infrastructure. So we'll use green roof as an example, because I think that's a a form of green infrastructure we're all very familiar with. And the requirement is set by a lot set or by, sorry, by the square footage of the green infrastructure provided. So um on basically for every X square feet of green infrastructure a developer would provide, they would get a one percent increase of lot coverage. And those um are what those numbers are in terms of what they have to provide are are set by lot size. So the bigger the lot, the more you have to provide us. The smaller the lot, the the lower that threshold is to get to that one percent. So we've done a an example here of of how this would build out, and this is done on a small lot. So on a small lot, it's actually more of like a one-to-one ratio. Meaning that um for every fifty square feet of green infrastructure built, a developer would get one percent lot coverage increase. So if you build fifty square feet, if you just do fifty square feet of green roof, you can have seventy-six percent lot coverage. And so what that means is, um for example, on on a typical lot that we're familiar with here in the city of fifty by one hundred, if a developer did a five hundred square foot green roof, they would get um uh they would get that additional bulk. So that would actually equate to um the ten percent. So that that means that they're now allowed to have eighty-five percent coverage with fifteen percent um permeable coverage required. And like I said, this can be done through um numerous types of green infrastructure, green roofs, rain gardens, bio swills, et cetera. Um. And the bonus bulk that they get is only going to apply to the building base. So that's the maximum sixty feet or roughly six stories. And this can only be applied to floors where parking is provided. So the understanding here is that usually we have developers coming in asking for increases on coverage in order to accommodate onsite parking. And in order to actually get that and accommodate the parking they're seeking to to incorporate in the plan, they need to give us back that coverage is what we're ultimately asking. Now, the nuance to that is that the larger the lot gets, the more coverage we want. So we start out at this one-to-one ratio on a small lot, but as we get to a larger lot, like a fifteen thousand to twenty thousand square foot lot, we ask for two hundred twenty-five square feet for that one percent. And so what that does is basically, we tried to look at if we if we pick the middle of each of these ranges, each of these brackets you see on the slide, we want to make sure that we're getting back a little bit more than we're asking for. And when we studied this on on the numerous sites at every range, if we took the middle point of all these um lot areas, we'd actually be getting thirty percent coverage back if they were to utilize this bonus in full. So where they might be getting twenty-five percent, the city is actually now getting thirty to thirty-five percent uh green infrastructure coverage. So overall, it would actually increase the net um permeability on the site or the net performative landscape coverage on on the plan area as a total. And here's just kind of a a three D version of how that actually plays out, if if that's easier for you to visualize. So again, this is a small lot. Um. So we're looking at a smaller building here. That would um under typical lot requirements have seventy-five um feet in which they could put building envelope and twenty-five feet of permeable coverage required. If they were to then provide that five hundred square foot green roof on this lot, they would get an additional ten feet of building coverage up to sixty uh feet or six stories of height. Um. And this will not allow uh just to be clear that this only applies again to the base of the building where parking is provided. It will not permit for the increase in size of any permitted tower elements. Okay, and last bonus, um not bonus, sorry, is really kind of like a new zone uh within the plan. We've added a neighborhood overlay district and we uh actually talked with property owners in the area throughout our meetings and um also looked at some of the realities of on the ground of how sites are laid out. And there are are two sites that we felt like this would be really applicable. They sit within the commercial um highway district, but we think that it would be reasonable that on these sites, they could have some level of residential development in the future. And so we've added the neighborhood district overlay, which means that the sites identified in the black hatch get the zoning rights of the neighborhood district. Um. And so they are, like I said, they have they front on Fourteenth Street. And they are now permitted residential zoning, but that can only occur sixty feet from Fourteenth Street. So the frontage of that street will actually still remain commercial. It will still remain true to the intent of the commercial district strip. But um going up and going back towards the core of the neighborhood, sorry, north towards the core of the neighborhood, they could transition into a residential use. Um. So residential uses are limited to levels above the ground floor on north-south frontages. So along Marin, along Grove, along Jersey and Erie and um the ground floor um residential is permitted on Fifteenth Street. So that's really to permit um some entrances into the building on Fifteenth Street. And these sites then would be eligible for bonus B affordable housing um because they have residential zoning. So the rest of the commercial strip district does not have uh the ability to utilize affordable housing, but those properties within this new overlay would. Um. And then lastly, that that covers kind of the scope of the changes that we're proposing before you here tonight, but we did just want to acknowledge that we had a a a lot of engagement with the community and there were a lot of concerns brought up that were outside of the scope of the redevelopment plan. And so we really just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, we we hear these and we're tracking these and we are, uh, we do have ongoing efforts outside of just this. Um, you know, proposal before you tonight to continue to address community needs and and this um, you know, it's not that often actually that we have gotten to engage this specific area of the city on on a regular basis. So we got a lot of really valuable information for us to take forward um in planning and studies. So a lot of the main concerns were walkability, mobility and environmental. Um. And I'm just going to briefly go through kind of concerns that were voiced uh by the the residents here and how we plan to um work to address some of these things in the future. So um there was a lot of concern about just that this is not a very walkable area. You know, it historically, this was an industrial part of the city, and so it wasn't really designed um to be a navigable neighborhood from a pedestrian experience. And so we're trying to write the plan to uh address a lot of those concerns and then uh address a lot of those concerns and then kind of continue that outreach um outside of just this effort. So in the plan, we've dealt with this by um looking at curb management and uh access and um some just design standards that that start to promote a more pedestrian friendly environment at the neighborhood level. Um similarly, we've been working with engineering to understand how the Bike Master Plan is gonna overlay with this neighborhood. It does call for protected bike lanes on north-south streets in this neighborhood um as well as some shared bike lanes um on some of the east-west streets. So this is just a snapshot from the Bike Master Plan. Um the green portions represent protected bike lanes that are proposed under that plan. While the blue are um neighborhood greenway, so that you can actually go into the Bike Master Plan and understand exactly what those bike lanes will look like in the future. Um we've also written into the plan the proposal to widen Marin to accommodate a protected bike lane. We think this is one of the most traversed north-south um streets in the city, and it's the connection to Hoboken at this point in the city. And so we do feel it's very important to ensure a comfortable protected bike lane without um affecting the traffic patterns, because it's also a very heavily trafficked street. So we're proposing the widening of that street under the the language here tonight, um which reduces the minimum sidewalk to uh ten feet on on Marin, which allows for that protected bike lane um while maintaining existing traffic patterns. Um we've also increased on-street parking on Sixteenth Street and Fifteenth Street, as I previously discussed. And um sorry, we've looked to um right in parking requirements for Holland Garden to really address a lot of the concerns we heard about, uh you know, how increased development in the area is putting pressure on this on the street parking and is starting to affect the way that um people are able to even walk through the neighborhood. Um environmental and quality of life. So this was something we heard a lot about. You know, we are next to the Holland Tunnel lanes in this area, and it a lot of people are really concerned about air quality, about, you know, the high traffic through the area and adjacent to the neighborhood and how that's impacting the air quality and noise pollution. We also met with some residents who live um in the plan area just north of of the rail line and, you know, they expressed a lot of um concerns about noise pollution, but in particular to how increased development along the the rail right of way would increase the the sound um bouncing that that happens from the trains. You know, it is a a high uh, it's a regional term at this point. So there's a lot of light rail and train traffic and through the area. And so we've written some requirements into the plan um to actually design facades for noise attenuation. Um and this, there's some standards in the design objectives that reach to how um really a lot of modern architecture practices help to reduce noise pollution um and actually can help to reduce air pollution and and can help double filter air. So double skin is a a common architectural practice that helps to like add an additional layer of filtering the air before it gets circulated into the building. So we've written standards into the plan to address that. Um we've required landscape bufferment buffers across all um rail lights of way. So there's now gonna be an extra layer of noise and um air quality control uh adjacent to the the rail lines. We have um coordinated with the city foresters. So we, I had a meeting with him to just address the fact that there's really a non-existent tree canopy in this area and how we can start to bring tree canopy to the neighborhood. So we're gonna be working with him um to try to start getting some plantings of street trees done at Sixteenth Street Park in particular. And then we do believe that through um future development, we'll we'll see this tree canopy start to come into place through the forestry standards. One thing to note is that we have increased the tree replacement for this plan area. So the forestry standards require that um any developer planting a street tree, they have a two-year guarantee period. If that tree dies within two years, they have to replace it. Um so we've increased that to four years for this neighborhood, just due to the extra challenging circumstances that exist here with a a lot of the the um utilities as they're built. And um just the challenges of some of the wind tunnels that exist in current conditions on Eighteenth Street. The forester felt that it was appropriate to increase that replacement requirement for this area. And then we've also um written in some standards for the Sixteenth Street Park redesign that ensure that a lot of that feedback we heard um from the polling questions really gets incorporated into whatever would come to be in a future design. And then we also want to just point out, we've done a lot of work outside of the plan, just on general LDO requirements that address a lot of these concerns, including the green area ratio. This is a floodplain neighborhood, and so a lot of the flooding concerns will be uh ameliorated uh through a lot of the green area requirements, the new stormwater ordinance that was recently passed and just floodplain regulations that um we have written into the LDO that would apply here as well. Okay. And um again, ongoing efforts, one of the biggest concerns we heard was this idea that or this reality that uh you know, very young children have to cross Fourteenth Street and Twelfth Street to get to school every day in this neighborhood. And um it's not a a really friendly pedestrian experience. So Matt Liz and I actually went out and walked those those routes of of how, you know, a a child would get to school um and just walking along twelve and fourteen street in general and documenting that experience. So you can see in the pictures here that uh there are parts of the sidewalk where it's it's literally impossible to for a pedestrian to stay on the sidewalk because of the way the signage and wayfinding is established for the tunnels. So these are the signage signs that are in the traffic lights for the Holland Tunnel. Um and so, you know, we've documented along the way a lot of these conflicts and we're preparing to coordinate with the port authority who controls and has jurisdiction over Fourteenth Street and Twelfth Street. So we're gonna be, we're preparing a memo right now to submit to them to start the conversation of how do we, how do we start to address some of these realities? Um because we really need to prioritize the pedestrian experience. And we believe there are achievable solutions to to like slimming down the profiles of a lot of these things and giving the sidewalk back to the pedestrian. Similarly, um we documented the underpass at Cole Street. This was, this is again, not in the plan area, but immediately adjacent. Um and this is something that the community brought up a lot, that just this pedestrian experience. You can see how dark it is. This is broad daylight. Um how dark it is to walk underneath here and you're really forced into the street. The sidewalk is very ill-maintained. There's cones, there's trash. There's no lighting of any kind. Um so we'll be working with city engineering and DPW to understand what's achievable. Obviously, we can't do overhead streetlights under an underpass. So you know, how can we address this situation? Um so similarly, we're preparing a memo for coordination on that. Um in talking, we actually learned that the community believes that just adding a crossing guard at Erie Street and Tenth Street um as elementary school kids are trying to get to Cordero would would be a huge improvement into their safety. So we've actually um coordinated on that. And as of right now, there should be a crossing guard there when schools open back up this month. We'll follow up to make sure that that comes to fruition. Um and we're also coordinating with the MUA on sewer capacity and their long-term control plan. As I said, this is a flood-prone area and the neighborhood experiences regular flooding and has a lot of concerns on how sewer capacity will be maintained as uh development comes online in the next couple of decades. And so we're coordinating actively to make sure that those capacities can be met and that the system can meet the demand of the future development. Um and similarly, as previously stated, we're still coordinating with forestry forestry on implementing street trees in the area. Um so that is the presentation. That's the conclusion of the slideshow. Like I said, I believe we covered really the bulk of the changes proposed in the language. If you have any questions on some of the more nuanced components of language, we're happy to answer. But I think this covers really what we would need to review in the document as well.
All right. Thanks, Mallory. That uh I gotta say, hats off. That's uh a lot. That was a lot to get through. Um this is definitely one of the you know, more in-depth redevelopment plan changes we've heard. Um and believe it or not, I do have a couple of questions. Uh I do wanna go to Bridget though first. Bridget, are you ca- okay to go on or do you wanna break?
I would like a break. If you tell me that we're gonna wrap it up in ten fifteen minutes, I'll say.
But um why don't we get through questions from the board? Uh I think we can probably wrap that up in the next ten to fifteen minutes. Um but we'll take a break before we get to public comment. I don't know uh, you know, what that's gonna look like. So all right, thank you. Um okay, so Mallory, I do have a few questions. Uh let's go to the light rail access off of Eighteenth Street. You don't have to bring anything up. Uh you can just, you know, if you're you're comfortable with that. Um the public plaza is uh, is that gonna require the build-out of the the property that's um I think it's a Lefrak property along Eighteenth Street that has a public plaza there as well. Um that, you know, will follow through from Eighteenth Street to the future light rail station. So does you can, if you wanna bring the slide up, that's that's fine.
Yeah, sure. Let me scroll to this.
Perfect, perfect. Um so my question is you know, currently on that that build out there with the light rail station attached. Um so we have access from Grove Street and also Jersey Ave on there. So that central public plaza. Um uh so we have the public plaza then right here. That's the public plaza. So do we need for any pedestrian access off of Eighteenth Street? Does that require the build-out of that property?
So no, the way it's written right now
Saying like this, like this lot here.
Right. So the way it's written right now, this developer would not be required to build out, but there isn't easement. I'm gonna also punt him at, I think he has the more updated knowledge on the Lefrak site specifically. Um but the way it's, this bonus is written, it it doesn't require them to build things out outside of their property line.
Um Yeah, so this is a concern of Allynquinn Equities, the petitioner for um light rail relay bonus. Uh currently, right now, the approvals that are in that green strip and uh on the gas station, which I actually believe is since changed hands, uh changed ownership. But uh does it count for in the setback to allow for the continuation of what you would think is a natural plaza tension to Eighteenth Street? Um the overlay bonus, because it's not their property, does not require them to uh make that bonus or to create that plaza space on the green strip. Um there is discussions with us and Allynquinn Equities, the petitioner uh on i- if the city is willing to do um acquisition for public purpose to create that extension. Um it's really a larger conversation than city planning at this point. Uh we don't really have a clear answer for the commissioners right now. Um what we're hoping is that that these amendments will incentivize or encourage the construction of the Lefrak property. Um we're pretty sure that the gas station wants to remain. Uh but as as you can see on this aerial, it doesn't include anything that would impact their current configuration of their site. Uh so maybe uh maybe the bringing acquisition for might be at the end of the day, the the best alternative for the city to to see this come to fruition. Do emphasis on uh pedestrian access from uh Jersey Avenue and from um Grove Street. So there are other ways that it will be accessed in the interim. Uh but uh as this becomes a reality, I think they'll be put, you know, pressure on ourselves to to really make this, make this a reality um and have it have it in its final form from the get-go. And I I think that once we know it's reality, that that's that's really kind of a take.
Okay, gotcha.
And that, just to add, I believe that hopefully, you know, should the amendments move forward, that we would have more of a mechanism to open the dialogue with those property owners so that the concept of continuity could be addressed at site plan review for Lincoln Equities, meaning if if we wanna uh you know, coordinate conditions of approval so that the the plaza, if it were to be built out entirely or or whatever form that would take that just from an urban design perspective, it it looks like one plaza and functions as one plaza, not like two separately developed spaces.
And to go one step further, we were really dedicated to this idea. Um and so there's another standard in the plan. Even requires this um attenuation of what actually Erie Street um and send a design standard on even the LaCoona, existing LaCoona building that, you know, once if they start to redevelop that larger site uh that uh, you know, been looking at the idea of a pedestrian cut through through the base of that building uh would be a a requirement um from Erie Street. So we're really trying to draw that through and uh uh and we we're committed to it uh from a urban design perspective, and we're hoping that the amendments here lay that out and and uh clearly.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I think that uh that would be a nice touch if that that, you know, the idea of that plaza continued through to Erie, it'll be amazing. Um, okay, the only other question I have is on the Holland Gardens overlay. Uh the bonus uh portion. Uh so you mentioned there's, there's currently a hundred ninety-two um units, we're gonna call them, or are we calling them actual bedrooms in Holland Gardens?
Units, there's a hundred ninety-two units.
Okay.
I think we call them replacement units.
Okay, um so you did mention there would be market rate, possibly market rate units in that development.
Yes.
Um but we're not dropping below that hundred ninety-two
No, so that's, that's a requirement of of um the federal housing law for the property is that they would have to replace one-to-one. Um and then we're kind of building in that extra insurance of that they they have to meet the intent of the IZO at the twenty percent. So that it might take more than the one hundred ninety-two to get to twenty percent of the overall development being affordable, and they would then have to meet that and increase the number of affordable units. Um but the one hundred ninety-two is is written into this plan, but also is is just a requirement. You know, jurisdictionally outside of of the purview of zoning.
Okay, gotcha. Uh yeah, that's it for me. Uh anybody else? Any questions? Anybody else?
I have, I have a couple of questions, yes.
Go ahead.
First, first and most of um growing up on Second Street and Jersey Avenue, um and um the twenty something years of my life was uh I gotta Matt and Maloney and the rest of the staff, uh this is, I I'm I'm very excited right now with this. Um the work you guys put into this. Um I I wish I could go over there and tell some of my friends that live in that neighborhood that we didn't forget about them after all these years. Because um growing up, I could never imagine the forgotten people of that neighborhood. And I'm talking to ones that live in the Holland Gardens. And um you took the walk to the school um which gave me goosebumps when you said that um as children. I could never imagine the high school students that have to walk all the way to Ferret's High School. And that's the only high school in the neighborhood. And the average student that sometimes got lost because of the rainy, cold, freezing days that they gotta walk all the way to Ferret's High School. Uh and a guy like me that was complaining to walk to the Ferris from Tech Street, which was like four or five blocks away. Um, you know, it it was, it was always unimaginable to me. Uh the friendships that I had of people that lived in that area and what they had to go to just to get into downtown Jersey City. You know, they're like forgotten. Um so I'm, my first question is what Chris was So I'm, my first question is what Chris was, the council chairman, Lance was saying. The units of 192 units being built out. Are they going to be displaced as they're getting built out? Or are they going to be able to do it in phases?
Yes, so they, they, there will be the option for them to do this in phases, but there will be temporary relocation required as part of the redevelopment. The Housing Authority has held several meetings with the property on the upcoming redevelopment and the upcoming process. It's been, it's been delayed since just due to COVID. The timeline for everything has been pushed back a little bit. But they have, there is a process in place for relocation. They haven't fully rolled out the plan for that, but everybody will have the option to come back. So everybody who lives there today, when construction is complete, will have the option to choose to come back to this site or to seek a, an affordable unit in a different property on the city, they'll have the choice. But there will be some temporary relocation required.
If they choose, if they choose not to come back, will they drop the amount of affordable units there? Put it as a market note, okay?
And they, I think it's also key that a, I, I think this is from Vivian Bravie Phillips. This is what she's communicated to me is my understanding that they also get the first right at coming back. So we'll go, we'll go through the, those residences and make sure that they, a chance to say yes or no. Then only after that, they have space, then they'll open it up to other people that might be qualifying.
Yes, great, that's great. I wrote so many questions down, I'm getting lost here on my pages, but because I'm, I'm really excited about this project. I think my main concern, my point is so that, I know we need a break soon, is the light rail, I don't think is an option. We need the light rail over there to stop there. If it can stop there before development is full, that would be great because there's people that are then now needing to get back and forth. It's, it's a hard walk. It's not an easy walk to go. I don't know where you took this walk, but just imagine doing this walk on a freezing rainy slushy day. You know, it's not an easy walk to go. And we talked about children, but we also have to talk about our senior citizens that have to go and move around this neighborhood. That's not, it's not a family neighborhood for, for the pedestrians. The other thing you mentioned crossing guards. One crossing guard in the works when school starts opening. I know there's places in the city where they actually have two or three crossing guards per corner. This would be 12th Street and 14th Street would be the ideal place to have two or three crossing guards at a time. Because it's such a, so many lanes that they have to cross through with the children.
Yeah, so currently, the Port Authority does have, I know they have police officer stations for crossings in the morning. I don't know if they additionally have crossing guards, but I do know that they have like supervised crossings of 12th and 14th Street during, during the school commuting hours.
Okay, okay, then I'm going to.
Eddie, Eddie, can I, can not? Yeah, let's get a break. And we'll take 10 minutes and we'll come right back to you, Eddie.
Okay, I agree. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. So it's 7:45, we'll come back at 7:55, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, Bridget, you good? Okay, thank you. All right, Eddie, take it away.
Yes. Okay, Bridget, I know I took long there and Chris.
No worries, no worries.
But, no, this is, this is an exciting plan, a very important plan. Looking at the school of overall, when they talk about building a school in this plan. Are we looking at any type of what grades these schools are? I know a grammar school would be great. But is there any way of putting like a high school into this area?
So the way we would do it is because this would be a public school. Any applicant looking to utilize this bonus would have to coordinate with the Board of Ed. I think that that would really be guided by them, you know, what the demand is in terms of capacity of other structures and where they see the demand and what, and where they see the build out being most feasible in terms of like how many classrooms can actually be built for certain age groups. You know, on a certain footprint. So we would require them to coordinate with the Board of Education to really get guidance on that. And make sure that the build out was fitting the highest need and, and going to be successful in implementation.
Okay, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to bring up too many, any other questions then. But what I will do though is I would like to just take this moment to tell the staff that these things with the light rail and the crossing of the, the walk into the area. The schools are very important that we stay on top of this. I will do my part with the council to stay on top of the, of the councilman of the neighborhood and neighbors. As this plan moves on in the future as a resident of Jersey City, because it's very important that I, I, I just imagine how many high school students we lost because they were average students and the walk to Ferris just became too long in the wintertime. And they wind up not finishing school. That, that's sad. That's sad that that part of Jersey City, we forgot about for so many years. And, and we could fix that now. We could, we could do something. You, in your vision, you saw that we need to do something about it. So I commend you on that. I'm not going to ask any more questions, but I promise that I will stay on top of this plan. Very important for that neighborhood and those people.
Absolutely.
Let me have a moment to, to speak on this. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eddie. We appreciate it. Anybody else? Any questions? Anybody else? Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Okay, all right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone with a hand up, do you?
I don't.
Okay, seeing anyone, I moved to close, seeing no one, I'm sorry, I moved to close the public portion.
Second it. Motion is made and seconded, public is closed. So Mallory, we have your recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of amendments to the Jersey Avenue Light Rail redevelopment plan regarding overlay bonuses, affordable housing and school development bonuses and a general update to standards and regulations and forward to city council with a favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
I, wow, Mallory, you rocked there. Great job. It was very thorough. The presentation was concise and very informative and I'm super excited that this is happening, just like Commissioner Torres said. I, I'm not from this area, but I, I think that this is a wonderful thing for the city and I applaud you guys for, for doing the work that you did. And this is really what, what you guys are supposed to do. And sometimes we forget how important your job is. So credit to, to the, to the, to the planning department. So I vote aye gladly.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Desai?
I know what Commissioner Torres said about the school, that area really needs a school, especially high school. And all the kids crossing that whole internal traffic going to the grammar school, it's so dangerous for them to cross. So traffic wise also, you have to do something and such a nice project, very well done. Congratulations on that. And I say aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
I, I just want to say thank you again to Mallory, Matt and the whole plane staff involved. You know, the level of detail and the thought put in that, how much you guys care about the city and how much you're really doing for it, so I appreciate that.
Commissioner Torres?
Well, if I saw Chair Dr. Gonzalez said was guys did a great job with this. The walk it going through there. About this and I definitely vote I honestly, thank you for your whole, the whole planet staff. Those are great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gangadin?
It's a great presentation and a great project. Mallory, Matt and the other staff members, thank you guys so much for addressing the safety concerns of pedestrian and the schoolchildren crossing all the way. We had heard that numerous times and thank you guys for addressing that. And in terms of this school, yes, it's very much needed to be there. And preferably at a high school as well. But thank you guys so much, this is really, really good, I'm excited about this, I.
And Chairman Langston?
Um, did we get, we got David, I'm sorry. Yeah, just in the interest of time, I agree with the other commissioners. Great plan, Mallory, Matt, I know Liz isn't on tonight, but I'll congratulate her too. And I'd rather just do it in person, but amazing job and I'll congratulate you in person, so I vote I.
All right, motion carries on favor, favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you guys. All right, let's move on to case P two one dash zero zero six is a minor site plan for three Second Street. Promoting Amanda Curly. And I moved locations, let me know if I'm still sound.
You're much clearer now.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, Amanda Curly from Willens Goldman and Spitzer. On behalf of the applicant, American Financial Exchange. AFE is the owner of Plaza ten in the Harbor Side Financial Center with an address of three Second Street. It's a standalone waterfront office tower with ground floor restaurant uses that was approved by this board in 2000. The proposal here tonight is really minor, we're going to remove a set of revolving doors on the southern elevation and remove two canopies. The impacted area will be re-clad with the same materials that exist on the facade. Plaza ten is located in the Harpsmith Cove Station Redevelopment Plan area. And the reason we're here for such a minor change is because of provision within the redevelopment plan that requires the board to review any reconstruction or improvements to buildings in the redevelopment plan area by way of a site plan approval. No deviations are triggered by this application. There's absolutely no change to the uses. It's simply the removal of an extra set of doors and two canopies. I have our architect here, Jeffrey Gertler, just to give you a before and after renderings and describe the project in a bit more detail.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
And Chairman, while we're waiting for the architect to be sworn in, I've reviewed the affidavit of publication proof of mailing, it does appear to be in order. It is for tonight's special meeting at 5:30 with the appropriate Zoom link. So that can be marked as a one for the record.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Let me just apologize in advance because I did pre-mark other exhibits. So we'll just have to make a note on the record when the exhibits go up of the correct number. And there's Jeff. Raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to given this proceeding will be the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And would you please state and spell your full name for the record?
Jeffrey Gertler, that's G as in George, E R T L E R.
And Jeffrey.
Mr. Gertler.
I'm sorry, Chris, Jeffrey is spelled.
I'm sorry.
With a J as in, as in Jeffrey.
Here, that's fine, okay. Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
No worries, Mr. Gertler, good evening, your license is current in the state of New Jersey tonight.
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified. And I, I don't know how much, you know, detail we need. It does seem like a minor change, but you know, let's just keep that in mind.
Okay, well, well, Amanda certainly explained, I think, everything about the project that I was going to say a few of the words, but it sounds like I should just go directly into the actual visual material to help you through that, if that's okay.
Yeah, if we could, let's just do it, you know, the before and after slides.
Very good, okay, so. Is this now, can you see this on your screens right now?
Uh, we cannot yet.
If you're having some trouble, I can always put it up as well.
Why don't you do that, that'd be great, Amanda, thank you.
Matt, can you make it so I can screen share?
You have the ability.
Great. All right, can everyone see exhibit A one? Now I'm gonna now mark it. So this is actually going to be exhibit A two.
Yes, we can see it.
Great.
And do we need to mark this, wasn't this in the submission packet?
It was, so we won't mark this one, we'll just mark the materials board, which is next, so.
Okay.
Don't mark this at all, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. What you see in the top photograph is the existing condition. And what we're doing is that you can see, and you could probably see my mouse right now, I hope.
No, but you can see mine, so just direct me and I'll do it.
So the canopy that sticks out begins on the, so the west side of the lobby and extends over to the south side of the lobby. It's actually L shape that goes inside of the lobby itself. The lobby is a twenty eight foot high lobby. So this canopy hovers somewheres in the middle, its lower ceiling is at about thirteen feet. What we're planning on doing, as you can see in the lower photograph, is to basically to remove the entire canopy. The canopy, well, let's see, I'm not sure why it was built originally because it doesn't shield people from the rain, because you could see it's actually underneath the, the higher second story level anyways. I guess it was purely an aesthetic choice on their part to have that. But what we found that it does, because our, our project is primarily the interior of the south lobby as well as the north lobby. But in the south lobby, it really blocks a great deal of light that comes in. It doesn't actually even shield in, in the, in the wintertime when the sun is fairly low in the southern sky. It actually doesn't block the sun from coming, coming into the back desks shield. So they actually, the concierge people in the back actually have sun coming directly into them anyways. So we're adding some windows shades on the inside to help them in that situation. But the canopy itself, what we found is that when we remove it, we did renderings for that from the inside. It really shows a much greater open space on the inside. The reason why we're doing the work on the lobby on this side is to create really more amenity space for tenants inside the building. Another place for them to come down from their offices to hang out and meet and greet people in their office or outside the office. So you can see, it really opens up the building on the ground floor. We think appreciably on the outside as well as on the inside.
And then Jeff, we're also removing the revolving doors, correct?
Correct, so we'll see that on the next slide, a little bit easier potentially. But under the canopy that's on the south side of the building, you could barely make out, you can't see a set of revolving doors on that. And it's like to the left of that lamppost. When the revolving doors come out, we still have an egress door to the left of them. What we're doing is that we're replacing the revolving door with new storefront material that's going to, which is stainless steel. Then we're going to be matching that stainless steel storefront as just a fixed pane of glass and a stainless steel frame.
Let me just pull up the materials board.
Yes, okay.
Hold on. So this will be marked as exhibit A two. A two, thank you.
Okay, so you can see on the materials board, on the upper, on the upper left-hand side, you can see, we're now, we're looking at the, at the center where there's no revolving door, just the free swinging door to its left. And the flooring, we're also adding the additional grounded pavers both inside and outside. You can see that on the right-hand side where the revolving door comes out. We actually fortunately have attic stock of the same stone in the building that we're replacing it with. So that, that doesn't change. And the canopy itself, on the lower left-hand picture that we're looking at, you can see there are areas that will be affected by the removal of the canopy. Because there's so much canopy that we're removing, we're able to reuse the alucabon panels from which we're removing and replacing it into locations that we need to patch. So we will look, of course, at the exact same material, sort of look identical to, to the material that we're removing it. And that's the extent of the work, we're not changing any, of course, in previous coverage. We're not changing anything because really all the work we're doing basically starts at thirteen feet above grade.
And that's it?
Okay, thank you, sir. I have no questions, anybody else, any questions? Okay, thank you, counsel, that's it for you?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. If anybody's here that wants to comment from the public, please raise your hand. If you are calling in and you'd like to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Sure, signal public, I moved to close the public portion.
Second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, public is closed. I have no idea who's this is. Matt?
For the night or me, just to make it easy.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Deputy.
So I, I prepared a staff memo on this, but it's fairly straightforward applications, simple, solid change. There's really no staff comment here, a staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two one dash zero zero six as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded.
And a motion to approve, Vice Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Cruz? I. Commissioner Torres?
I.
Commissioner Allen?
I.
Commissioner Horton?
I.
Commissioner Gangadin?
I.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
I.
Chairman Langston?
I.
Motion carries on in favor on a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to case P two zero dash one six four is a final major site plan amendment for one fifty five Bay Street.
Hello?
Counsel, good evening.
I hear you.
Good evening. Are we ready to go?
Sure.
Good evening, commissioners, staff and council. My name is McCann from the office of Conne Foley in Jersey City. I'm here tonight on item number fourteen, case number P twenty dash one sixty four. On behalf of one thirty four Bay Street LLC in connection with property located at one fifty five Bay Street, block one one five oh six, lot two point zero one. This property is located in the Powerhouse Arts District Redevelopment Plan area and specifically in the arts theater residence overlay zone, sometimes affectionately referred to as the Atraz. Counsel, if you're out there, this was a notice case because I do have a deviation. I have three deviations. Can you confirm receipt of my affidavit of publication and service, sir?
Good evening, counsel, thank you, chairman, I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at one five five Bay Street here in the city. It was noticed for tonight's meeting. We can mark that as a one for the record.
That'll be a one.
Thank you. So tonight's application is an application for an amended final site plan approval for phase three of the Provost Square project. The applicant initially received its final site plan approval from this board on November twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen, memorialized by resolution dated January eighth, two thousand nineteen. As approved, the project is a thirty three story mixed use building with two hundred fifty nine residential units, retail space, a parking garage, a performing arts theater, multipurpose art related space with twelve work live units and one artist in residence unit. All to be housed in a new building behind a restored A and P annex facade. As I said, this is an application for an amended final site plan approval for this building. The main reason that we're back before the board is because after we received this board's approval, the project advanced to the construction plan stage. Structural and mechanical engineers became involved in the project. And, and we found out that in order to make the building stand and to make it function properly, we need to make some design amendments to the site plan approval. There are also some changes that are being requested after consultation with the Jersey City Building Department. There are some changes that are responding to market conditions. And there are some changes to this project being requested to respond to COVID nineteen or a post COVID nineteen world. The plans that we're presenting tonight, we have architectural plans from SLE Architects. We have landscape plans from Malillo and Bauer and civil site plans from E S E consultants. All of those plans are last dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one. They are all posted on the web portal. And they've all been filed with this board for several weeks now. The vast majority of the changes that we're requesting approval of tonight are minor. Many of them are inside the building. And we have also filed because of that, some detailed memorandums by the architect, the landscape architect and the civil engineer. Those detailed memorandums were also filed with the plans. I believe they're also posted on the web portal. So for the vast majority of our amendments, we are going to rely on those plans and the memos. For our presentation, we are only going to focus on street level items, community benefit items. And there are, there are two variances and one deviation that occur above the thirty third floor. We have to present those to you, obviously. Just as a housekeeping matter, there are two sheets. Sheet A fifteen and A eighteen where some minor changes were made last week in consultation with Matt Ward. So, so there are some changes on those sheets, we will show you where they are. And we're gonna, we're gonna ask that those sheets be approved in lieu of the ones that were filed. I believe we have Matt's approval to show you those plans and discuss them with you tonight. As far as witnesses, I'm only going to present two witnesses, the project architect, because the vast majority of the changes are architectural. And Ed Plan, Ed Colling, the, the project planner. I have my landscape architect available, my civil engineer available if we need them, but I don't plan on having them present anything. In terms of what we're presenting, most of what you're going to see are the filed plans, select sheets from the filed plans. You will see that they've been colorized and sometimes labeled in order to make it easier to present and easier for the board to understand the changes. There are those two sheets I described, there are one or two additional sheets to show you some versatility aspects that we're proposing for the theater. And then there's one rendering that we're going to use just to explain the overall scope of the, the entire project. Having said that, if there's no questions, I'm going to bring my first witness.
So counsel, I could ask is, since we're going to show some colored renderings, let's mark those as they come up. We can start with A two, I won't interrupt you or the flow of the witnesses. And you can just mark them as they come on screen as A two, three, et cetera, and tell us what those are. You obviously can present those plans that were submitted to Matt and his exhibits tonight that weren't originally.
that weren't originally in the package. And counsel, I understand this is a phase of a project. Has any work begun? And is any of the deviations that are now being presented constructed already? Or all of this is proposed to be constructed?
So this project is ready to be constructed. The goal is to be in the ground by the summer, but nothing has been constructed as of the date hereof.
Awesome. Okay, chairman.
All right, thank you. Counsel, I apologize. I was away from the desk. I had my headphones in and I think I was on mute. So I apologize for any confusion there.
No problem.
Okay.
I'm ready to go with my first witness if you're ready to hear him.
Sure, I'd love to.
Okay. Paul Albano is the project architect.
Hey, raise your right hand, Mr. Albano, and unmute yourself first. No, you're still muted. You might want to go into the Zoom screen itself and just go over to the microphone icon and make sure that it's not red. Left-hand bottom of the Zoom screen.
Only if he's on a computer.
If he's not, we're going to have a problem. There you go.
I can walk him through the iPad.
Okay, you're true. Just hold on.
He's usually a pretty big talker. I can't believe he was on mute.
Okay. Do we hear you yet? Paul? Do you want to say something first?
Yeah, still can't hear him.
All right, connecting to audio.
Getting X showing up after the connect to audio, maybe call in. Should be a call-in at the top of the agenda. Well, and and once you get in, Paul, make sure to mute your computer speakers and a star nine and we will promote your phone number to panelists. Use your audio from your or your video from your computer.
Call-in is one three oh one seven one five eight five nine two.
Anto, with that voice, you can do a call-in special.
My other John. If you need a ID number, it's eight nine four six five four eight six four four eight. Is now the wrong time to remind Mr. Harrington that we have a eight-thirty cutoff on special meeting?
All right, I think I'm here now.
Okay, we got you. Yep.
All right, I had to recall in. My apologies for the long.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state and spell your full name, please?
Sure. Paul Albano, P A U L A L B A N O.
Thank you.
Mr. Albano, good evening. Is your license current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're qualified. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Albano, Paul, you you've been the project architect for Provost Square all phases since approximately two thousand nine, correct?
I've been the project architect for all phases with exception to phase two. But we did the master planning for all for all three phases.
Okay, and you're the project architect for phase three?
I am.
And you've prepared the plans that are before the board tonight, correct?
Correct.
And you are familiar with and have reviewed the Powerhouse Arts District redevelopment plan in the Atraz District?
Yes.
And you're also familiar and reviewed the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance for tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the slide that you have up, the board's never seen that before. So I mean, they've seen prior versions of it. But what I'd like you to do is just tell me, is this rendering based upon plans that have been approved by this board in the past and based upon the proposed plans that we're putting before the board tonight?
Yes.
And you had this done by your office, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Paul, I'd just like to just to acclimate the board. I'm not sure if all the board members are fully familiar with the project. So I'd just like to take two minutes. Can you put the cursor on phase one of this project, Paul?
Sure, sure. It's the portion that stands in the back.
Right. So Commissioners, this is a four-phase project. There are three phases shown in this rendering. Phase one is the is the phase that just Paul just discussed. It's already fully constructed. It's a mixed-use building, primarily residential with retail on the ground floor. And part of the parking garage you see in the middle of that building, that deck, is already constructed also as part of phase one. Paul, could you show the show the Commissioners phase two?
Sure. Phase two is the portion of the plaza and the portion of the building that you see in the right-hand view.
And Commissioners, this is also a mixed-use project, primarily residential, retail on the ground floor. And as Paul described, there is a public plaza in front of that building that was constructed by by the developer. And then, Paul, let's now show the Commissioners what we're proposing to have, what what we've had approved at final site plan, but we're proposing to amend tonight.
Okay, okay. So I'll use this rendering. I think the rendering is easy to sort of give you an overview of all the the minor changes that we're going to present tonight. And then I'll go through the floor plans to see how to show you how they affect the interior spaces that subsequently sit behind the exterior.
But before you do that, there's a very general matter. The tower in the middle of the screen is the tower that we're proposing right now, correct?
Correct, correct. So so the thirty-three-story tower is the portion that sits behind the annex facade that would continue thirty-three stories. And we would re we'd restore the annex facade to the and provide the the performing arts theater within that, as well as the live-work units and some market rate units.
Right. And then Provost Street, which is located right in front of that project, would be the continuation of a public plaza. It will be closed by by the applicant per this redevelopment plan and it will become part of the public plaza, correct? Just as a general.
Correct. Pedestrians only.
Okay. All right. Now, if you would, walk us through your your plan.
Okay, so the the changes in our plan that we're proposing tonight are basically at the ground floor of the theater, where the changes are essentially to lower the floor, the first floor of the theater from six feet above the plaza to an elevation of only three feet above the plaza to make it a more accessible area and a more accessible theater for the for the users to be able to access. So we felt that, you know, post-COVID, there's a couple of things we were considering. Most of them were about how to make things a little more flexible and how to make things a little more easier to access. So that was the first change we had considered, was to take the theater, lower it, make it more accessible for all for all the users and they would be able to traverse six steps to the top instead of what we had about twelve steps to the top. So so now it's much more, it's much closer to the the plaza and easily accessible. The other change that occurs from this facade is that we've introduced the mechanical equipment on a second-floor roof that serves also the the Performing Arts Center or the theater. And then other changes that we had from this rendering that you can see that we dealt with some rooftop changes. So I'm going to take you from the ground up and I think I'll start with the first floor plan. And if you have questions, stop me. But I'll start with the first floor plan being a colored version of what was submitted. And for ease of use, I colored everything for the theater space and the support of the theater in green. So this theater would be proposed to have five hundred and fifty seats in which we are in excess of at the moment. But we utilized a different seating arrangement, which is much more flexible. And in consultation with a theater consultant, it was it was basically discovered that to make it more flexible and to have more ability to have different types of performances, that the original design we had was very limited. So we we opted for a modular seating arrangement that allows for flexibility in stage arrangement as well as seating arrangement. The next two slides, I'll show you those different seating arrangements. But before we go there, I'll just show you that the orange portion, which is how you enter the theater, is all lowered to elevation nine foot zero, which is three feet, three feet above the plaza, essentially. So there's six steps that take you up. The entrance sequence is primarily the same with the exception of less steps. So you don't have to traverse all the steps to get up. We brought it down. It's much more accessible to the public. And by doing that, we did address some issues with the building department regarding some egress issues that they were concerned about for the theater. And we took that opportunity to kind of rework the portion of the building services to include some egress out to the street from midpoints of the theater and then use also that opportunity to simplify some of the design. And I think part of that was to put down on the first floor the generator that serves the building rather than on the roof where it was kind of cumbersome to get fuel oil to the roof and to get electrical services up to the roof, then back down to the remaining floors. So the proximity of the generator being in this portion helped us keep the the function of the of the theater and the support spaces a little easier from a mechanical standpoint. And that last two remaining spaces are the performing arts theater exhibition spaces, which are highlighted in purple, which are also at the same elevation as the lobby, accessible from the lobby and visual from the exterior plaza. As as you enter the theater, like I said, there are two options for seating or three. One is the one you see in front of us, which is just a standard arrangement of seats facing a forward-facing stage or what, in consultation with the theater consultant, an option to have a theater in the round, which would be the stage, a demountable style stage, which would have seating around all four sides of it. Again, seating capacity is approximately the same for every layout. This is six hundred and five hundred and sixty-seven seats. The prior one was five hundred and sixty, I believe. The next arrangement for a theater is a theater is a thrust stage where the stage actually comes out into the audience a bit and allows for different types of performances and and runway shows and so on. But again, this is a five hundred and sixty-seat arrangement using the modular seating. That sort of arrangement made it obviously much more flexible to have different types of shows and hopefully will have better success as a theater as as different performances and venues come to this area. So that that's the ground floor.
So Paul, just just one or one or two quick questions. So yeah, we we each version of the theater. So Commissioners, just just to be clear, Paul, we we didn't, I don't believe we actually included in our application the second and third version. So counsel, I think we should probably say the rendering is exhibit A two. I forgot to take care of that for you. So the rendering that we showed, we're going to mark as exhibit A two. And then Paul, go and and then so Paul, go to the the theater in the round. We're going to mark that as a three. And then the thrust theater, we're going to mark as a four. That's the next exhibit. And and just to be clear, there there were versatility is one of the things. This is supposed to be a community-based theater, Commissioners. What what the applicant's hoping for is with a regional outreach to it. And after consultation with a theater expert, it was it was determined that you can actually make more use of the theater and possibly get more bookings if you have a versatile and different kinds of of ways to use the theater for different types of performances, music, art, theater performances, drama and dance. So that's the purpose of of the flexible-use theater. But there also is a COVID nineteen purpose, which is you do have the ability to spread some of the patrons to the theater out a little bit more. And then a final versatility aspect is there may be some performances where you don't need five hundred and sixty seats. Maybe there are some types of community theater or poetry readings or performances for music, concerts, recitals, where you may want a few less than five hundred and sixty and it gives the ability to create a little bit more cozy of an environment. And those are all the reasons why we're we're requesting the versatility, the flexible-use seating. Now, Paul, the size of the theater hasn't changed hardly at all, has it?
No, it has not.
It was originally approved at at twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-two square feet. I believe we lost like twenty-five square feet in the in the rearrangement and reorganization. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's twenty-six thousand five hundred and seven square feet now.
So it's substantial. It it's really the same size as it was.
Correct.
And and according to the redevelopment plan, we must have five hundred and fifty seats and everything we're presenting is in excess of that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have any more questions regarding the first floor of the theater.
Okay. All right. So then I'll go right to the second floor, which second floor is even more minor because the second floor only consists of storage space and support space for the theater. So it was, again, just rearrangement of space to provide storage that was in closer proximity to the theater rather than scattered, accessible by an elevator and stairs. So the portion in green, as you see, is really the only support space for the theater that had changed. The remaining portion that is not colored is theater support, but is it had always been pretty much the same as it as the original approval. So I'm going to go to the third floor. Since there were, the third floor is actually the roof of the annex, which is roof over the Performing Arts Center is the location in blue is where we located the the HVAC units or the rooftop units that supply air to the theater. And it was originally designed on the roof, which was, which was not the most efficient use of a mechanical design. So we, you know.
Paul, you mean, you mean, Paul, you mean on the roof of the above the A and P, above the on the total, on the podium, at the top of the podium, right?
It was it was above, it was on the upper roof.
Right. Oh, on the upper roof. Okay.
On the upper roof, yeah. So we had some mechanical, you know, during the planning stage, it was thought that it could be on one of those roofs. It it ended up on the very upper roof and it wasn't the right design. So we moved it to the lowest roof that was accessible, that would provide the best amount of air, the most efficient, smaller unit, you know, less ductwork. You didn't have to go up the building and maintain ductwork that, you know, could potentially, again, in a COVID world, you don't want to have thirty stories of ductwork for a theater that sits, you know, two, one story below you. So this for us was the perfect opportunity to use the roof space, screen it and provide a rooftop unit that would be efficient for that theater use.
Paul, can you go back to the rendering and show the Commissioners what that's going to look like?
Yes. So this screen is what would hide the rooftop unit, which the screen is about ten feet tall and the unit sits behind it. So I'll go back to go back to the go back to the rooftop. So that's the third floor. And there were no other changes related to the third floor. The changes that occurred on the fifth floor were primarily changes that happened around the green, which is the work-live area. So the work-live spaces occur on the fifth and seventh floor of the annex building. Well, the fifth and seventh floor of the annexes, the floors don't actually align with the tower floors. But in any case, there are six on this floor and six on the floor above it. And the only reason why we had to change these was we had some concerns of some dead-end issues. And we, with the building department, reconfigured some of the walls on the interior side. And what that resulted in essentially was an average unit size of about 900 square feet per work-live unit. And I think the original size was 920 square feet average per work-live. So they got a little smaller, but they didn't get any less functional because we were able to manipulate the interior wall space. And being that they are not, they're all zero bedrooms. So they're all basically studios. And they're very, very large for a studio of that use. So the space difference was very negligible in this regard. So that occurred on the fifth and seventh.
Paul, the live-work units are required by the redevelopment plan, correct?
Correct.
And we've originally proposed, we've always proposed 12, and we still have 12?
Correct.
Okay. And there is no minimum requirement for the size in the redevelopment plan, correct?
Correct. There's no minimum requirement.
All right.
Okay. So I'll move to the next level up, which is the eighth floor amenity roof. And the only change that we requested here was, again, looking at the building as a whole and looking at the ratio of exterior space to interior space, it was obvious that we needed a little more interior space for fitness and amenity. So we've increased the interior amenity space on that eighth floor by just shifting the wall outward a bit, giving us an opportunity on the floor above it to create private terraces for those units that sat below it. So there are private terraces created on the ninth floor by us moving the eighth floor wall out that almost 10 feet to create that. So what we did to do, what we also did was on this roof, again, because there were proximity issues with mechanical equipment, is we reworked some mechanicals so that the mechanical equipment that serves the arts-related spaces that happened on the third and fourth floor, this equipment was in closer proximity to that as well. So it worked out where we were able to provide mechanical equipment here that serves the arts-related space, rework a dog run that already existed on this roof, and then screen it so that it's not an eyesore to the residents and the passerbyers on the street. So I'll go back to the rendering again, just to show you that. As a view, that line that you see is the screen wall of the mechanical equipment, similar to this screen, that would exist around the roof of the annex building to shield that mechanical equipment. So it's not visible from the street.
And again, Paul, the art-related space is right below it. So the idea is to get more efficient, safer HVAC air into the art-related space, correct?
Right. That is correct, Jim.
Okay.
So from here, I think we could move up the building to the main roof. Because the mid-towers haven't changed any. So the biggest change here was, again, as we looked at the exterior space to interior space ratio, we really needed to have a little bit more interior amenity space. So by providing it with this yellow, we were under the maximum building height, so we had height to work with. So we decided that if we enclosed this space, it would be an opportunity to provide amenity space on the interior.
Paul, just a couple of quick questions. So the maximum building height for this building in the redevelopment plan is 350 feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if you add the allowances for flood considerations, the building is allowed to be 362 feet, correct, per the LDO, JCLDO?
Yes. Measure from the sidewalk, yes, Jim. Measure from the sidewalk, yes.
Okay. And then also, there are some exceptions for rooftop appurtenances that are allowed. And under the LDO, we would get another 30 feet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So this building that you're going to show the commissioners now still complies with all of the height requirements that are applicable to it, correct?
Yes. All building heights, it's within all building heights.
We're not asking for any deviations in connection with height?
No.
Okay. But there are two variances, one for rooftop coverage, which has a 20% max, and we're asking for 27% coverage, correct?
Correct.
And then there's also a setback requirement in the LDO, correct?
Yes.
So we're asking for a variance on that. It's very minor, but we're asking for it, correct?
Yes. I can show you that.
Just let me ask this, and then you can show the board. And the last deviation is from the redevelopment plan. It's a sightline deviation that we need, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now just show the commissioners where those.
Okay. So I think the easiest way to do it is to use the sightline diagram because it'll cover the two variances, the setback and the sight diagram. So the sightline from Maron Street, because these buildings are set back from Maron Street, so you could actually see more than you would ordinarily if the building was not set back as far. So in this case, what I highlighted, what I show in red is a sightline from a person standing across Maron. And what you see by the yellow is what is in conflict with that sightline. So the two options, the two variations would be the setback and the fact that it's within sightline, it's within your sightline. So that's both, one being from Maron, which I highlighted as number three, and one being the site from Morgan, which I highlighted as number eight. But again, highlighted in yellow, the portion that is within that sightline only. So again, building setback from Morgan. So that is what really causes the issue there. And as you can see, it's very minor, but it is a portion that is in conflict with the sightline. So we highlighted it and asked for the deviation.
And the reason you picked the sightline from across the street is because the redevelopment plan standard is from five feet above the sidewalk across the street, correct?
Right. A person's, right. Right. A person's eye level across the street is how it's.
All right. Could you go back and show the commissioners what you did on the roof now that triggered those two deviations quickly?
Sure. So again, the yellow represents all the interior space. So being that we were within the height limit, we increased this portion and enclosed it. And by doing so, we were able to recapture space that is now for common roof terrace. So it's slightly smaller than what was originally proposed, but it's more useful for the residents of the building. What you see in blue is a space that is interior mechanical space that serves the tower portion of the building. And that is enclosed space, newly enclosed space, which is what triggers the 27% request or deviation. And the space above this blue, which is a room that's enclosed, above it is where the cooling tower would sit with open to the sky above, however, screened by a brick screen, which would appear to be just a wall from below. So we would carry the same wall and brick structure up. However, it would be open to the sky to allow for the cooling tower plume and all to just evaporate into the air. So what I highlighted in blue is the portion that sits on the roof that makes up the 27%.
Okay. And all of this occurs above the top floor of the building, the 33rd floor?
Yes. Right. So I'll go to the elevation just to show you where I highlighted. What I highlighted were two things. I highlighted the maximum building height, which is a 350 above flood level or 362, as Jim mentioned, from sidewalk. And then the additional 30 feet for maximum allowable bulkhead height. So we're below the bulkhead, as you could see. And our spaces that are enclosed are below the maximum building height. And it's only roof and parapet that are above that. So we are within the maximum building height. I highlighted the drawings. I highlighted all three elevations or four elevations just to show you that there is no conflict with any of them as they present themselves to the street. So I think I hit all three of them. Maybe I skipped this one, but I'll go. As you can see, the changes all happened below that yellow.
And these plans are all the filed plans with highlighting that you did in order to show the board the different scales, correct?
Yes. With the exception of the two, Jim, that you pointed out, being the theater alternate seating arrangements, the theater in the round and the thrust, these plans are identical, yes. They're just colored. Yes.
So counsel, let's just mark them and make sure we have them at plan.
Yeah, I will do that.
So I think that concludes what I have to say, unless, Jim, you have other questions for?
Do you have the two pages, Sheet A14 and A18, that you could show us, Paul?
A15 and A18, right?
I'm sorry, A15, yes.
Yeah. Right. Okay, so A15, right.
So this is a minor change that was made to the filed plans that we showed to Matt late last week and early this week.
Right. So on the Morgan Street side. Yes, I will, Jim. On the Morgan Street side, because we took the theater and we lowered the floor level of the theater, like I mentioned earlier, we lowered it to a point where it was actually below what the flood plane is, which is okay, and it's acceptable. However, we did need to have flood mitigation up to elevation 12, which would mean we'd have to provide three feet of water protection. So what we did was we left the height of the water table at the 12 feet. So the only difference here is it's higher than would appear if you were standing at elevation 12. So we just continued the same material, which wraps from the top of the building, or the top of the annex, down, creates a roof covering, and then comes back into the plaza level. And that's a metal panel that is consistent with the metal panels that are used throughout the remaining Phase 1 of the building. So it's the same color, and it's going to be the same material, which I could show you after I show you A18.
Paul, that's Morgan Street, which is actually the side of the theater, correct?
This is the elevation from Morgan Street, yes. The elevation from Provost is this elevation, which I highlighted here in yellow. And the portion that would be water table would be the portion here. As you could see, it's three feet above the plaza. It's three feet above the elevation of the theater. So as you walk up these six steps, there's a water table that would stand three feet taller. And it's represented in the renderings as well, so you could see it. But it's the same metal that comes down and creates that sort of wrapping and ties the theater to the annex building.
So just as a practical matter, when you lowered the elevation of the theater, which makes it more inviting to people because there's fewer steps, you still needed a flood barrier. So we have this, what you described as the flood barrier, which is three feet above the steps, and it's six feet around the corner of Morgan, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Five foot eight, to be exact, yes.
Okay. And the materials you're going to show the board?
Jim, before I move on to the next sheet, can we just go back to that sheet real quick? I just wanted to, because I'm not sure we discussed it. Can you zoom in again?
Yes.
The areas that I believe are retail base, the right?
Yeah.
Is showing like a hatched area that's double height. Is that now metal panel or is that window to the left of the door?
To the left.
And those two punched opening areas, yeah.
So these punched opening areas are the performing arts exhibition spaces. So they're not theater. So it's the same, basically, the floor level is the same 12. So you're looking out, so it's not double height. So a person standing stands at, person standing, Matt, stands at this level here. Oops. Were you asking about the material?
Material.
Material would be the same. It looks like it's stippled here, but the material would be the same material that follows the metal around.
Those aren't, those two punched opening bays that you just drew the line across, those aren't on the same plane as the doors, right? Those are up most close to the edge of the stairs?
They are. I'll bring you to the plan. They are. They're in line with the face of the building, and it creates the alcove. So they're not, so the stair still sticks out beyond them. So this is the line of the existing building, right? So the existing columns are still there, and we're just wrapping between them with that metal.
So there wasn't a reduction in the retail in this case, Jim?
No, no, no. The retail has never changed here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Keep on.
So requesting that those two plans, A15 and A18, be approved by the board as part of this application. Other than that, turn it over to questions from the board for Mr. Albano, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We didn't get a chance to see that material board, though.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Yes, you're correct.
Are we marking those A5 and A6, the sheets?
Yes, please. Thank you, Matt.
So A5 is, I believe it's A15 on their end set, and A6 is A18 on their plan set.
Yes. Thank you.
And counsel, I would ask that these are updated for signature plans also.
They will be, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And we'll get that done through Matt, too.
Okay, so Mr. Albano.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I am sorry, Chairman. What I was going to say is this is the exact identical board that was presented for Phase 1, with the exception of the screening that we added. So we added this portion of screening, which would be the screening over the performing arts exhibition space on the second floor and the screening on the ninth floor roof that was screened mechanical equipment.
But Paul, you mean, Paul, you mean this is the board that was approved for Phase 3 in 2018, correct?
It was, yes.
Yeah, not Phase 1, Phase 3.
No, right. Phase 3. It was actually used to Phase 3 as well, but Phase 1, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Sorry, Chairman.
No worries. Okay, Matt, you're okay with that, with these materials?
So the metal panel is what the flood barrier is, right, Paul? Right there, charcoal gray?
Yes, right. That is consistent with the rest of the metal panel that comes around Phase 1 at the moment. It's the same panel.
And, okay.
Same color.
Right. And that's now being used on Phase 3, where we just showed the board?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
No, Chairman.
Okay. Just have two quick questions for you, Mr. Albano. The generator now being on the ground floor. I'm concerned about the fuel tanks. I'm sorry, fuel tank, I'm sure it's a single tank. How is that shielded from the outside? Is that enclosed? So, you know, no smells escape from the generator room?
So there is intake for the generator, right? So there's intake on the street that requires intake. But the exhaust is through, the exhaust will be up through the top. So it won't be on, there won't be exhaust on the street. There'll be intake by these louvers.
Okay. But I'm just talking about any, like, standing fumes. You know, obviously, the generator doesn't come into play unless there's a power failure. But, you know, I'm just concerned the. But, you know, I'm just concerned the fuel tanks being on the ground floor in like their static state. That there's fumes that will come out through that, you know, through those louvers.
Well, I mean, we hope there's not, if there's fumes, there's a leak most likely, right? So I think what, what happens in the most part is there's a requirement to test the generator weekly. It'll be tested weekly. There'll be inspections done to see that it's functioning properly and that there are no leaks. So I would, I don't know that fuel leak and smells are a major concern. I could understand your, your, your thoughts, but I don't, I don't know that, that would be an issue for a, a generator. We put them pretty close to electrical service if we can, most of the time. And I haven't heard many complaints about smells through louvers or from side, people passing on the sidewalk unless it was running. Cause then when it's running, you might, you might get some fumes because depending on how the air flows and it's very windy in this location, I know that. But I don't know if, you know, a standing day without being tested that you would notice a generator being there.
Okay, i- it's just a concern for me being that the public plaza is right there. Generally, we try and keep them on a, you know, just on an aside, not, not near a, an actual plaza.
Gotcha.
So that's, that's my concern there. The other concern is the, the HVAC units being, while we're on this slide. The HVAC units that are going to supply the theater. Is there any noise associated with them, being that they're so close to the plaza also?
So the only, that noise was a concern for us as well. So we were concerned about, about noise, but because the theater is gonna, we don't know that the noise will be a factor. Because it'll only be running when the theater has, you know, a function. And I don't, you know, from what we've been told about the decibel levels of this unit is that they were, it was pretty quiet. It's not, it's not a generator. It's, it's, it's an air handler. So you might, you know, will, will you hear belt spinning? Will you hear air intake? I mean, when air moves, you do hear it, so it's, it's not like you're not going to hear anything, but I don't know that you're going to hear it as if it was. Like a, a generator sitting on the roof. It's not a constant, it's not a constant flow of air when it's not, when it's not in service, when it's not running. So it's not constant, but it may be.
Let's be honest about the use. I, you know, obviously there's going to be heating and cooling taking place all the time in that theater. You don't want pipes to freeze in that theater in the winter time.
No.
It's not that it'll be shut.
Right, it won't be off.
No, but it, it'll run on, you know, obviously not a constant basis, but, you know. It'll be running from time to time there and more so when the theater is, you know, in use.
Yes.
I, I mean. You know, i- in theory, I'm concerned about the noise on the, again, being on the public plaza there.
So one thing, one thing we try to do, and, and I, I, I think, I think your point's well taken. I think one thing we try to do is keep all of the ductwork and services that supply the air from the unit to the, to the spaces. We try to keep them on the interior wall side so that they're not exterior to the roof and they're not ducted out from the roof. They're kind of ducted into the roof from, from the side of the, from the side of the unit. So there's an opportunity there to keep isolation and keep acoustical ratings a little tighter around how it gets, how it services the space. But to say you're not going to hear it, I couldn't tell you that you're not going to hear a motor humming or some airflow, right? You did, it's, it's, it's not going to be the noise that prohibits people from walking in the street. It's not, it's not going to be deafening. I don't know the exact decibel levels, but I know that when we talked about moving it here, we talked about the concern of noise. And visual, obviously visual issues too, so we screened it.
Sure.
But if there were, if there was an opportunity that needed to be addressed for noise, there's always some opportunity to line it or acoustically deal with the screening.
Yeah, again, I'm just concerned about, you know, that being so close to a public plaza. You know, I'm not going to say it's going to ruin somebody's day, but, you know, it could impede some enjoyment of someone's time in that public plaza. If it's a nice quiet day out there on a weekend when there's less traffic going by, I think it's going to be more noticeable.
Paul, can I ask you? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, counsel.
Paul, how high above the street level is that? That's at least, what, more than thirty, thirty feet high above the street?
Yeah, let me, I'll get you the exact number. It's closer to twenty-five, I think, but I'll just check that. So actually, it's, it's about twenty-five feet, Jim. There, there's fourteen, well, it's twenty-eight minus, minus five.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah, it's about twenty-three. It's about twenty-three feet.
Alright, so, so it is above, it is above the plaza. It is a distance.
Yeah, no, it is.
I, I mean, it's just, you know, it's a variable here that, that we can't really determine the, the sound level in this meeting tonight. You know, I'm just wondering going forward if, I, I don't know, i- if we can add some kind of sound attenuation on there. If it hits a certain level, that's, that's audible from the plaza. You know, it's, if that unit remained on the roof, it's not a, a question for us. But I think it, you know, it definitely comes into play here.
Paul, is there any kind of buffering that we can add around it in order to, to muffle or redirect sound up instead of out?
Yeah, so there's always the opportunity, like I mentioned, there's always the opportunity to provide sound attenuation on the inside of the screen. To allow for the sound to not go outward, but rather go upward. You know, that's, that's certainly something that can be addressed, some, certainly something we could provide. We don't know that it's going to be an issue yet, but it could be done if there was an issue for sure.
Okay. Matt, what do you think about that? Is this something that, you know, we should just be aware of and, and keep an eye on?
In our review, we didn't, we didn't bring this up as an, as an issue, but I think your point is valid. So I'm, I'm not, I don't know if staff would have a recommendation on to try to address here tonight or not. We would kind of look to the commissioners to, to decide. You know.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I'd feel more comfortable with some kind of sound attenuation on there.
How about if we do this, Mr. Chairman? What if we, what if post hearing? We investigate the, if we can, a little, in a little bit more detail. How this, this machine runs and what it's, what we anticipate the sound being. And we work with staff in order to see if we need any sound attenuation more than what's up there. And if we do, we'll, we'll propose something to staff and hopefully work it out that way.
Matt, are you comfortable with that?
Uh, sure, yeah, we'll just look to, look to our, the city ordinance on, on, on sound rules and, and try to use that as a guide.
Okay. That's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Albano. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Okay, next witness is Mr. Ed Colling.
Promoting Ed Colling.
Ed, please raise your red hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
In state and spell your full name for the record, please.
Edward Colling, E D W A R D K O L L I N G.
Thank you.
Mr. Colling, good evening. I know we only saw you last week, but your license is current tonight?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Ed, you've been the project planner for all phases of this project since about two thousand nine, maybe before that even, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you've testified about this project, all phases, many times, correct?
That's correct.
And you're familiar with the plans that we're presenting to the board tonight?
Yes, and I've been here for the entire presentation.
Okay, and you've reviewed the Powerhouse Arts District redevelopment plan as well as the LDO for your discussion tonight?
That's correct as well.
Okay. All right, can you kind of walk the board through the two variances and one deviation that Mr. Albano and I previously described up on the thirty-third floor of the building above it?
Yes, certainly. The first one I'll, I'll discuss is the rooftop coverage.
Paul, do you want to, Paul, can you share one of the plans for Ed?
Yeah, that, the colorized rooftop would be, would be good. I think the one, the next one down might even work better. Yeah, cause there you can see the other, other uses that are on, on that roof being the, the common open space in the green and the amenity space in the yellow. That stairwell in the middle of the yellow is also part of the rooftop appurtenances, as is the mechanical room, which is labeled there. So a, as you can see, that's, we've minimized this to the extent that's, that's practical. This is actually a variance because it's part of the underlying Jersey City Land Development Ordinance. The Jersey City Land Development Ordinance applies obviously to all zoning districts and redevelopment plans in the area. But I would point out that the, the zone districts, there's really nothing that allows for buildings of, of this size. Buildings of this size are typically found in redevelopment areas, whether at Journal Square or along the waterfront. So it's a little bit more difficult to apply the JCLDO to some of the redevelopment areas that provide for larger scale developments such as this. Cause obviously in the lower scale building, something that range from four stories to ten stories, as is typically allowed in the LDO. Your amount of rooftop mechanical equipment will be lesser. So in a building of this size, it sort of creates a bit of a hardship in trying to comply with the twenty percent when you have a thirty-three story building versus say a six story building. So that's part of the difficulty here. The other thing I would point out is that we're looking at this twenty-seven percent as being the upper part of the tower. So that's, we are covering twenty-seven percent of that. But this building, it's really two towers, a large base, and then the, the area that's included behind the AMP annex facade. That's a very large roof area. So if you look at it from all the other mechanical equipment, the equipment that's on the south tower, the equipment that's on above the AMP annex and et cetera. Really, the combination of all our mechanical room equipment is going to be significantly less than the twenty percent. So this is a situation that wasn't necessarily considered in the JCLDO because it's a, it's a situation you find more in redevelopment plan areas. So I think it's a little bit, a bit of a hardship here in applying it in this instance. And the other thing I'd point out would meet the, more or less meet the intent, because if you take all the roofs together, we are certainly under, on, under twenty percent. These altogether cover about, you know, eighty thousand square feet, I would, I would think. It's about a square block. Now, the other thing I would look at, this is from the perspective of a C two variance. Where this project, you know, clearly meets the intent of what was trying to be accomplished by this, this particular zone in the Powerhouse Arts District in, in general. It provides the, the theater space. It provides this open plaza. It provides the, the reconstruction of Provost Street to expand the plaza. It provides work, work, live unit. So we meet so many of the intents and purposes of this redevelopment plan that it's clearly a significant amount of public benefit here. And the detriment of this extra seven percent, even if restricted only to the tower, is, is minimal. And so therefore, I think in this case, the benefits clearly substantially outweigh the detriment. Now, the other two situations, one a variance and one a deviation are really linked. And that's the, was shown on the exhibit that Paul had shown before where, where you looked at the site angles. The setbacks are, that Jim had mentioned, really come from the, the LDO, which is three forty-five, there's sixty G and a sub paragraph two, which talks about the, the equipment being set back or any appurtenance being set back a foot, one foot, one inch for every foot of height. We actually meet that criteria measured from every other street except for Morgan Street. And, and that's not unusual when you have a corner lot or you have a lot that has multiple frontages. Because it, it, it's difficult to set, set things back from every, every, every facade and then still have a place to place the equipment. So that can be seen as, as a hardship. And then I would also look at it from the perspective of the C two, and I won't repeat it, what I just mentioned for the, for the coverage. But it's the same situation. We meet multiple purposes and intents and, and, and the intent of the redevelopment area and this particular zone. And to have that relatively small triangular portion be the only intrusion into that, the site angle is really the minimus. And so the, the benefit, the benefits to this would substantially outweigh any, any detriment. And again, that's linked also to the deviation, which is a more general way of saying the same thing that the JCLDO says. It really just talks about the, the site angle and the visibility from five feet across, from being fi- a five foot height across the street. And this happens in two locations. One is on Morgan, the other is on Marin. And it's partly, at least on the Marin side, it's, I was very shocked to even see that it was a, a case of that. But that's because the, the viewer, the pedestrian would be so far away that, you know, the angle is, is such that you really almost can't help to see it. But you're really located four hundred feet, five hundred feet from that point. So it'd be looking, like looking down a city block and seeing something at the end of the block. So I think the impact there is minimal. From the Morgan Street side, it's a more acute angle and I don't really think it'll have any impact on the pedestrian environment. So again, here you can see that the, the impacts would be rather minimal. And the benefits of the project in general are so substantial, you could also look at this one in terms of being, the benefits outweighing the detriment. And that concludes my testimony.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Colling. Anybody? Any questions for Ed?
I've got one question. So the, the appurtenance, this is the same material as the facades of the lower, of the, are correct?
I, I believe that, and I let Paul respond directly, but I believe when I was looking at the plans, that the material on that was, yeah, was a brick. The material rather than stucco or something like that. That was, I think, was a deviation that was granted in the past. It was looked at as being better to have it bricked than say a stucco, as was slayed out in the plan.
Right, so like.
Right, it's brick.
Right, right. So in, in another, I think another element in. Right, right. So in, in another, I think another element in support of the C2 criteria that they're making in this argument.
Okay, yeah. The similarity materials does, does help.
Okay, anybody else, any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Colling.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCann, anything else?
Yeah, the only other thing is, so, you know, there is a community benefit component to this entire project. And, you know, if the board would like me to, Ed and I can quickly run through the fact that, that there have been no changes to the community benefits that we went through in 2018, except for a small handful of them. Would you like us to talk about that?
I, I think they've all been outlined already, right?
They have. If, if there's no need to go through it in detail, we won't. The, the resolution from 2019 lays out all of the community benefits that have already been met. The theater and the art-related space changed the grand total of 58 square feet. That goes into an analysis regarding the affordable housing or workforce housing component. But the 58 feet, I can assure you, does not change the requirements, the community benefit requirements in any way, shape, or form. It's too de minimis of a number.
Okay.
And we'll lay that out in a resolution for the commissioners.
Okay, yeah, I think the board's satisfied with that.
All right.
Okay, thank you, council. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody from the public would like to comment, please raise your hands. And if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Chair, I do see a hand up, I think. Or I did.
I did.
Matt, do you see someone?
Catherine Leonard is voted panelist.
Okay, thank you.
It's appearing on me. Catherine, are you there?
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And just spell your full name for the record.
K A T H R Y N M O O R E, two Os, one R.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, good evening, and you know the drill. We have five minutes for you.
Hi. I just wanted to, like, just chime in and just, like, say that I've been talking with Henry and Toll Brothers over the past couple of years, and, and they've been great in communicating, you know, all the different phases and the different changes and stuff like that. So the community, as far as I'm concerned, is, 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 is good with this, especially, you know, we met with Robinson about the, the theater changes, and we kind of feel like the flexibility is, is really nice. You know, having a fixed-seat theater, you know, was a little bit limiting, so I think that's, that's good. Just to kind of jump off your concern about just the, the air conditioning units being on a lower level as opposed to being up on the top of the roof. Like, you're talking about, you know, the noise along the plaza level. Does this also affect the residential building that's directly across the street on Morgan, the 143 Morgan Street? Or the actual tenants that are in the artist spaces, in the units within the building? If they're going to be pushing the audio sound of the air conditioning units up as opposed to out, will those people ever be able to open those windows that are right there? You're muted.
Thank you. We'll definitely address that, but do you have any other questions, just so I don't have to keep pausing your time and going back and forth?
No, I, I, that, that's pretty much it. You know, it's just like, you know, the decision to put it on a lower level, you know, we're all, like, kind of sensitive to the sounds of, you know, the air rushing out of these parking garages, you know, sometimes they're really, the fans are really loud, and you can't have your windows open when they're, when they're on full blast. So, you know, will that be sort of the issue with those HVAC units that will be, you know, on that 23 feet, you know, on a lower level than on the top of the roof as, as others? So is the, the move down to make their space where the pool is less quiet, whereas, you know, the, the noise is now moved to the street level, like that sort of thing? Just kind of, you know, wondering where those compromises and why those were made. But other than that, I think, you know, the space that they, you know, and the interior and everything just looks great. And again, Toll Brothers has been very forthcoming about everything. So that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, do you want to address that? Have Mr. Amato, I'm sorry.
I think, sure, but I think, maybe I can address it. Certainly, certainly the noise is a concern of the developer also. The intent in moving the HVA system was really so that it would better serve the theater itself. That's, that's what was had in mind. You know, it's funny how you learn things at these meetings. I, I don't think, you know, at least going into this hearing, I didn't think this would be an issue, but obviously Toll Brothers doesn't want to affect their own tenants with the noise, so we're going to have to look into this. I don't think the people across the street would really be affected. It's pretty far away, but certainly from the, from the plaza and, and from the tenants above, we'll look into this and report back to Matt Ward and see if we can make sure that this, this is going to be quiet enough that it doesn't disturb anybody.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, I don't think, you know, Ms. Moore brings up the, the noise that comes out of parking garages sometimes. I don't think it's going to be to that scale. I hope it's not to that scale, or we're going to have a, an issue. But generally, the, the number of units in those, you know, that, that have that noise coming out of garages, it, it's a greater number of units. I think this is a much smaller unit. Just, you know, from my experience in construction, I, I think it's not going to be as bad. But, you know, it's certainly a concern, so.
We'll look into it.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand.
We have Sam, Samuel Pot, who's been waiting very patiently as a panelist for a couple of seconds here. Thank you, Sam.
Okay.
And would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Mr. Pot, do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state and spell your full name for the record?
My name is Samuel Pot, and that's spelled S A M U E L P O T T.
Thank you.
Mr. Pot, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Good evening. Yeah, well, thank you for making the time to take some, just a couple of questions. I was, came in front of this board probably four to five years ago, when another performing arts space was under deliberation, just a block and a half or, or less, maybe a block from the Toll Brothers space, and that's, that's the Nimbus Art Center at the Lively, which is now open. And so first of all, you know, want to voice that these projects somehow do come to fruition, and I remember speaking with you all then, and, and we are now open. So many of us are really excitedly anticipating the opening of, of this new theater. So I want to, you know, first of all, just express enthusiasm on behalf of the arts community, the performing artists of Jersey City for this space. I did have the opportunity to speak with two representatives from Toll Brothers, Connor Jaeger and Henry Waller, both about the project and as well about the proposed changes for the seating arrangement, which, like Catherine, I, I endorse that change. I think it will make the theater more practical in terms of usage for different performing arts genres. I have a couple of questions on that, however. First question is regarding the, the actual cost and of, of building in that retractable seating and platforms, confirming that that will be handled as part of the kind of base construction of the performing, the performing arts space, and not a cost that will then be kind of the responsibility of the nonprofit once they move in. I know that those seating construction can be extremely expensive, so that's one question. Second question on the staging, and this might be a technical question that, for the, the theater design consultant on this, the, the temporary staging does have drawbacks in that it doesn't have the same kind of pliancy that a, what we call a sprung floor has in, in kind of modern theaters. The construction is such that the stage has a little bit of give, which really protects performers, especially in the field of dance. And I, I question the, the, the stage that's proposed and, and its construction, is it going to be a safe stage for performers, you know, which would, which would have an impact on, on the kind of usability of this theater and, and, and as, as a kind of, it's welcome, welcomeness to performing artists? So those are my two questions, kind of about the cost of the actual seating and also the, the, the safety of it for performers, the, the stage, that is. But largely, want to express, you know, my real enthusiasm for this project, seems like an amazing addition to the, to the neighborhood and to the arts field in Jersey City. And I'll just end by saying that, you know, I really encourage for this project to begin the planning of the, the usage and program, the programmatic usage of the space. You know, this, this thought into the design is essential, but, but equally important is to really begin the thinking of the, the usage and the, how the programming will be planned and rolled out so that that is not an afterthought, once the, the building is actually built. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was muted again. Thank you, Mr. Pot. I appreciate it. Counsel, do you want to address those?
I do. To answer the first question, Mr. Pot, the, the retractable seating, the, the stage, that is all part of the development of the theater, that is not part, so that is the part of, the obligation of the developer. It will bear all of those costs, that will not be a cost of the nonprofit. To answer the second question, we did consult with a theater consultant who thought this stage, at, at the, the stages that are, the stage that's been chosen would be safe for all kinds of performance, performances and artists. We can go back and check, check with the theater consultant again to make sure that this stage is safe, because we want it to be safe. So we will make, we will make sure that it's safe for all types of performances.
Okay, thank you, council. Okay, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, I don't see a call in anymore, but if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, say no more public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, do you want to wrap this up here?
Sure, so this is a multi-phase project, a very ambitious project with lots of community benefits that's been in the works for probably close to 15 years. And it is definitely the, the real heart of this overlay, this theater with the live-work and arts-related space and the artist-in-residence unit that are all part of this third phase. They've now delivered Phase One and Phase Two with the associated community benefits that were assigned to those. And some of the, some of the things to wrap up with regard to Phase Three is, one, obviously, they're, they got the, the theater to get up and running and programmed. I'm talking with, with Mr. McCann. They've already tried starting to coordinate on the board memberships, which actually includes three members on the city side that actually are appointed by the city, so that they've been working with Christine Goodman, with the city to try to get ahead of that, and it should still work to be done there, as far as I understand. There's also an artist-in-residence unit that's to be dedicated after its, after CO is, is, is given to that unit. And the, the work, live units are, are to be marketed to artists for a certain amount of time, as is outlined in the zoning. After that, there's a Phase Four. Right now, they still have a valid preliminary site plan approval on that. They've never come in for final. There is a Permanent Extension Act of 2020, signed into law by Governor on July 1st, I believe, last year, that calls any of the, calls at extent approval to six months out from when they, they lift the state of emergency to COVID. So that approval would have otherwise expired last year, in June of last year, but because of that Permanent Extension Act, a, we're looking for them to come back. In regards to either coming in for final or acting for extension, I think they've shown a great deal of, a great deal of competency with getting all of these things done in, in an amazing amount of time, truly on the heels of the recession. And I think, I think Phase Four done would be, I just, albeit a small capstone, because it's only 32 units of workforce housing, would be a great capstone to this four-phase project, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P20-164, as presented to the board here tonight, with the condition to work with staff about the sound attenuation issue. Second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval.
A motion to approve with conditions as laid out here tonight. Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres. You unmute?
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangigan.
Hi.
Commissioner Desai.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
A motion carries on in favor, on a motion to prove.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
As always, appreciate your time, staff, too.
Thanks, council.
And council.
Bridgette, are you okay? Do you want a break real quick?
I do. I need, I need a restroom break.
Yeah, I'm sorry. All right, it's.
I blame it all on Jim McCann. It's, it's, don't worry.
Of course, of course.
It's about Alexa.
Five minutes.
Perfect. Okay, so it's 9:40 right now. We'll come back up at 9:45. And Matt, in the, during the break, can we get Mr. Harrington and his team up and ready to go? Maybe? Okay, we'll work on it. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we'll work on it. Yeah, thank you guys. Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Uh, Chuck, I don't, sure if you're there. Any other witnesses other than um, Ms. Palermo?
Uh, yeah, no, can you hear me now? Yeah, uh, is, I'm just gonna uh, have Jennifer. I have Sean, Sean Savage is here, but uh, I don't anticipate him testifying unless there's any civil uh, questions.
Alright, I'll just get him up here just in case.
Hey, Darren Chuck.
Hey, how are you, Bridget?
Bumping into my brother in Westfield there or what?
I haven't, no.
Hmm.
You don't see as many uh.
Not when the kids get older.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, you don't run into anybody.
His, my youngest niece, his youngest daughter is a junior in college, so.
Yes, my girl's, my youngest is a junior in college and my oldest graduated last year.
Yeah.
So I don't even run into my kids.
Lucky you. Just kidding. Just kidding, actually, my clan is coming down.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, tomorrow night, so we get to see the babies.
Yeah.
You know, so who do you have tonight, Jennifer? Anybody else? I was kind of hearing and I wasn't.
It's just gonna be Jennifer. I, Sean Savage is here too, but I, I don't anticipate him testifying.
Hi, Jennifer. Haven't seen you in a while. Haven't seen anybody in a while, right?
Yeah, right. I thought that last one was gonna be the Jerry Maguire. You had me at hello. Let's make a motion.
Not so much. I said I blame it all on Jim.
Oh, and John, Bridget John confirmed. He, he mailed your check, so my client.
Yeah, he wrote, he wrote to me. Very nice, very nice guy, so. Eventually, things will get back to normal with that, but it's easy that way. Thanks, Chris.
Jen, I see that there is another attendee by the same name. Are you, do you need me to promote that one as well?
You did, Jen.
Um, no, I was listening on my uh, my AirPods before, and now I'm sitting back at my computer. That one is, should have.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have an audio mic issue. Okay, sounds good.
Let me just, let me go double check the, um, check that. I'll be right back.
Oh.
Chairman Langston, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
You guys got me?
Now we do.
Now we do.
Oh my God, now you're, um, these headphones are killing me.
There's a feedback though, Chris. I don't know if it's coming from you.
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, you got me, guys?
Yep.
Okay, I think I, I don't think my headphones are working. Um, so I guess I'll call the case again is P two zero dash one five seven is a preliminary and final major site plan for one thirty to one thirty-two Monitor Street. And uh, counsel, I was just commenting on the time right now. I didn't think we'd hear you this late, but uh, okay.
Yeah, well, I can get it done by eleven. No.
Just let you, uh, let you roll with that comment and not say anything.
This should be very quick.
Okay.
So, um, so I, I guess, can I start or do we have everybody back?
Sure. Uh, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, excellent. I only have one ear now, but batteries don't last as long as they used to, I guess.
Um, okay, so I'll start off then. It's uh, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I did uh, provide notices uh, in connection with this application, although we are not seeking any deviations. So I ask that they be marked into evidence.
And you counsel, Mr. Chairman, I am received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application here this evening. All appears to be in order. We can go ahead and mark those as A1 for the.
That'll be.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, given a, a brief overview because uh, this, the, the agenda says preliminary and final site plan. Uh, that's, that is the application before the board. That is correct, but um, in, in context of the project, it's really an amendment of uh, an application that was before this board in November. Um, that approved an eight-story fifty-six unit building. Um, we are now proposing eight stories with seventy units. And, and the reason is that we are adding a lot just to the south of, of the project. Um, so that will add fourteen units, which is more than twenty percent of the prior fifty-six. So the uh, local ordinance then triggers this uh, as a new site plan application. Um, so on the agenda, it's a new site plan application, but this is something that you've seen already. Um, so very simply, it's a, it will be, go from fifty-six units to seventy units. Um, we'll still have the five parking uh, spaces on the ground floor, and it will still be eight stories, uh, all of which conforms with the Morris Canal redevelopment plan uh, in the TOD North District, which this is located in. Um, the applicant is also presented to the Morris Canal CDC uh, prior to tonight, um, about a month or so ago. Um, so that is all in order as well. Um, the, you know, it is under construction under the prior approval, and this, this approval would, would um, uh, let my client continue the construction um, on the adjacent lot, uh, on plot twenty-six. So with that said, I, I have Jennifer Palermo is going to take you through the changes. I also have Sean Savage here tonight. He's our civil engineer. We did receive comment letters from the MUA and Jersey City Engineering, all of which we agree to comply with or address with them, so that's not an issue. But if the board has any questions for Mr. Savage, he is here. So with that said, um, I'll kind of turn it over to Jennifer so she can walk you through the revisions.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
And do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name for the record?
Jennifer Palermo, P A L E R M O.
Thank you.
Listen, uh, Ms. Palermo, good evening. I think this is the first time we've seen you. Um, you know, in pandemic time, uh, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, if you could uh, share your screen.
Certainly.
And walk them through the changes.
So uh, what we have here uh, before you is um, our first and upper floor plans. The first floor plan is on the right. Um, you can see here, um, I've drawn a, a dash line showing uh, one thirty-two Monitor Street, um, and one thirty Monitor Street. You can also see the property lines. Um, there was a building here that unfortunately um, came down. And um, we are adding this portion to our uh, previously approved one thirty-two Monitor Street. What this does for us is actually a lot. Um, we now have a really great uh, entry and lobby area with a mailroom. We were able to move our fire command center closer to the front entrance um, and really make um, our lobby uh, and lounge area uh, quite spacious. Um, we've kept our old entrances now um, being utilized for mechanical and utilities. Um, and uh, we still have our uh, parking and our trash area um, further down towards the dead end of Monitor Street. On the upper floors, um, we originally had seven units per floor. Um, on this side of the building, we have two elevators, um, and our two uh, egress stairs. And quite simply, uh, this addition uh, allows us to provide two more units per floor. Um, it was uh, convenient that our uh, elevator and stairs were configured in such a way that um, we were able to uh, share all of the uh, utility infrastructure with the original building. And so um, our addition is quite literally all residential and no uh, no services. On our roof deck, um, our previously approved building has um, a very generously sized roof deck. Um, and really, that is the amenity space. We have corridors and a bathroom on the, at the penthouse level to serve our um, roof deck are for the residents. And then we've added a mechanical room to the roof over uh, our addition. Um, this is the elevation. I will show you a rendering. I'm in a colored elevation in a second, but you can see here with my dashed line. Um, this was previously approved. This is the addition. Um, and we are moving our uh, entrance to the uh, this new addition. These are some of the details that we provided. Uh, we're, our signage meets the requirement of being less than twelve square feet. It will be a recessed uh, backlit, like uh, backlit numbers and letters on our uh, uh, our metal clad um, entryway. This is our side elevation, and this is our material board. Um, we have uh, pretty much, we have sanitized silver for our windows, um, gray color for our grills. Um, and then you'll see in our colored rendering that we have um, various colored uh, fiber cement panels um, that we are proposing. I also did a shadow study, um, which shows basically that with this location of our building at the end of a dead-end street with the uh, train embankment uh, directly adjacent to us on December twenty-first at nine thirty, noon and two thirty. Um, we are, our shadow really only uh, intrudes upon the uh, train embankment and a vacant lot across the street. Um, I'm going to change my this view so you can see the colored elevations. Let me just pull them up really quick. Where are we? Where did we go? So these colors are a little bright. I have a rendering that shows the colors as they, um, as they really are. Well, they're, as they were shown on our materials board. Um, let me just bring up that rendering. So this is the rendering of the building showing the entrance um, here at uh, with the clad aluminum um, adjacent to the building that is three stories tall. Um, we, we have the fiber cement panels that are these different colors. These red verticals are um, bent aluminum and actually protrude from the building about a, a foot to add a shadow line. Um, we have full uh, full custom grills that go from uh, window sill to window head, which uh, obstruct the view of our PTACs and our uh, HVAC and exhaust uh, terminations for a very nice clean look. We actually, that's the same treatment we have on Garabrant, which is um, just on the other side of the block. Um, and that is, I'm sorry?
I don't know if this rendering was distributed. Uh, do we need to mark this?
Uh, it's possible. It may not.
I, 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 I think we should mark it as A2. You're right, Matt.
And it's a elevation from Monitor Street.
Yes.
Thank you.
Untitled, undated?
I don't see a date, but um.
It's, it's undated, right, Jennifer?
It is undated.
And untitled. It's looking at the property facing, uh, I guess the west elevation.
That's correct. And we will provide a PDF of it to Matt.
Sorry to slow you down. Hurry up.
I'm sorry, that's it. I'm done.
So who, and uh, that completes our presentation unless anybody has any questions for Mr. Savage. But again, it's, there's, there's no deviations being requested. It's complying with the Morris Canal redevelopment plan.
Oh, we can't hear you, Chris. Oh my God, you guys got me now?
Yep.
All right, somebody's going to the Apple Store tomorrow, I guess. Uh, yeah, I have no questions. Uh, anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment.
Move to close the public?
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for uh, I'm sorry, motion made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, anything else? Uh, yeah, no, I just wanted to make note of the um, staff memorandum dated April ninth, twenty twenty-one. Um, we make reference to the fact that this application should look very familiar to the commissioners. And um, this is the new application. Um, we do recommend uh, our, these six conditions of approval. Uh, Chuck, did you have, under review this? And do you have any issue with agreeing to these conditions?
Yeah, all those conditions are acceptable.
Uh, with that, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash one five seven as presented to the board tonight.
Second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval.
Uh, motion approved with conditions vice chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangeden.
Hi.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, counsel. Alright, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Sure, I have. Chair, I have two resolutions today to memorialize. The first one is applicant Newport Associates Development Company for preliminary and final major site plan approval. The address is Pier 199B on Block 7302, Lot 5. And the case number on this is P two zero dash 115. And then the second resolution is applicant Lafayette Development Fund LLC for preliminary and final major site plan amendment approval. 130 dash 132 Monitor Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, Block 17504, Lots 26 and 27 dot 01. Case number on that is P two zero dash 157.
Okay, I'll entertain a second, please.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for memorialization. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Torres.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Commissioner Desai.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries all in favor of results memorialized.
All right, thank you, guys. Do we need, blah, do we need an executive session? Anybody?
No.
But you decide, said it best.
All right.
Executive session, I move to adjourn for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Sorry to keep you so late. Don't ever listen to me when I say nine o'clock ever again. And enjoy your night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Everybody, good night.
Good night.
Good night.